In that thing flicker at her, we started the. Oh, no, not again.
We're going. It's been going. Everybody seen today's agenda? Any comments, questions, corrections? An agenda of the approved.
I did, I had one. We didn't. Were we supposed to have the? About the tower?
How?
And I forget it all.
Of what about the towers?
Well, they're about the amount that they want to pay us. I don't want to do.
Zach was gonna look into maybe iron or looking at who could be as a consultant.
Good.
And maybe he hasn't got anything for that.
Okay.
Can you reach out to Zach and have him see if he has anybody that can help us with that negotiation?
Okay, so we were holding off waiting here. Okay, I'll get a hold of them.
And then if he says yes, we can bring him in to talk about it.
And we may.
Yeah, good point.
Kind of forgot about it. You just asked that question. I thought about earlier, but then.
I want to know that we're gonna move the city.
I just don't want them to slap that on us because we didn't reply.
City's gonna talk to us a little bit earlier than when I.
Oh, right. They're gonna zoom on so they'll know when they're ready, when they show up on Zoom, so.
So we'll jump to them when they get on. Okay, anything else?
That was a lot.
Good you brought that up. Ring in minutes.
November fourth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding. Members present were Schultz, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossberg. Member absent, Dozard. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The Board had a discussion with Lorena from the Dennison Tree Press. Lorena would like to be considered from Publishing County Records. Stephanie from Casa had a discussion with the Board about services that they provide in Crawford County and had requested five thousand for fiscal year twenty seven. No action was taken at this time. The Board had a discussion about mental health services for Crawford County. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hyden, to approve the tax rebate for eleven eighty six. The Avenue Charter Oak, Jason and Courtney Webb, new addition, three years, one hundred percent, excluding local school tax levy. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hyden, to approve the Crawford County contribution of five hundred dollars to help cover the cost of the Amicus brief. And that's going to ISAC. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Schultz, to approve the proclamation of supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Motion passed unanimously. The Board took a recess at ten fifty five AM. At eleven thirty AM, a motion was made to open the closed session per Iowa Code twenty one point five subsection one, subsection C, and twenty one point five subsection one, subsection I, meeting with Pam Born, which allows for closed session. At eleven fifteen PM, the closed session was closed or open, closed, I don't know. No longer in session. A motion, on motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at one eighteen PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM, proceeding the next.
How much was it for the ISAC?
Five hundred.
I'm gonna assume that most of that'll be used. Is that, is that what they requested? Or was there still county yet to commit? Do we know?
That's what they requested for all counties. And then I think they were gonna cover the difference of what county state signed up for. We didn't want to leave it as an open end. I think you could chose to do less. You could have chose to do more.
Right, right.
I just thought that was a fair amount. And I just was wondering if they actually got more than they needed to make the twenty five thousand.
Yep, uh, we, I, we'll have a meeting next week. So I'll know more who all signed up. But like Wade, I think that's Wade Weiss I brought it up. Almost like he could leave it open ended. What do you give? Because then everybody's wondering, well, do I give a thousand? Do I give?
Right, exactly.
So we just set a five hundred. That's a kind of a fair agreement.
I just hope you don't, this county don't currently have the pipeline.
I think so.
Because it, it's not about the pipeline. That's what we gotta make sure we have for these other counties.
I think ISAC.
It's about home rule.
And that was kind of in their letter that they sent out.
Okay, alright.
Well, if you put in a hundred dollars, you get the same benefit as somebody that put in a thousand dollars that doesn't seem there.
You know.
They see the city's on.
Any other comments about the?
I just, I just had that quick.
Hey, no, your question.
And regarding the green light, um, the Operation Green Light, we do have green lights along in the. I think it's in the, the second story and a few in the first story in the front of the courthouse building, yes.
I did go shopping and I did try to find something.
Maybe in the spring we'll have better lot.
I did. We don't have any outlets on the front of the courthouse that we could find, so.
You couldn't find solar?
I could not find just.
Maybe in the spring we'll have a better opportunity to do that because those solar lights and spotlights and things will be out in full force.
I did find one that you can push and it, it kind of just moves lights all around and you can make it be red or green or whatever.
Yeah, like Christmas lights.
Yep, but it would have to set kind of out in the yard, you know.
And right.
I have a timer put on it, but I don't think that we necessarily want to stick that in the.
I know.
Don't think that's a good plan either. So my shopping was not successful.
I'm sorry about that.
Probably take it.
So much for taking it for the team.
Yep, you up. It's not the aisle. I usually go down, but it was okay. I either taken or somebody could trip over it or, you know, it just didn't seem like what we.
Trip over probably would happen.
Yeah, destroyed somehow.
Or somehow if we had a snowstorm and then the lawnmower goes over because of the snow. Anyways, I did it out. I did do a little shopping for us.
We do have City of Dennison on.
Let me get Sherry quick.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Farm line doctor, if anybody enters.
Slung my ass more. Yep.
Yeah.
Pretty nice.
People at all times.
And there'll be quite a few interest.
I didn't get to read this yet, so I can dig into it, but that's South Senator Goldfirth. I'll look. That's all I know. If anybody wants to count the news.
Well, that's certainly not the one that I have on that. It was supposed to be in the right hours.
Yeah, makes me wonder if they're, that's a good point. Why are we still sending?
I believe, I believe a lot.
So come there, excuse.
Great morning.
Must be yours.
I think we have the City of Dennison on. Jessica, are you there?
Your vote.
Jerry called them.
Yeah.
Maybe they're not on there. Just stepped away. On a.
Nothing looks like she's on.
Who's the other one? Oh, Craig, those are you aren't there, excuse me. Jeans are.
Says I can.
You must be good at seeing one.
Is there a way to? Can let, you can let them in or they?
If you can pick, you can figure it out. Thank you, Derek.
Yeah. Eyes in my skills. Do you have her text or something or Ian Jody's?
Used to.
Who was it that was coming on, Jessica?
Yeah, Jessica and Jody. She was, yeah.
Yeah, our kid was getting her license. I saw him up there. He passed.
I'm sorry, this is Jody and Jessica. Did, did you guys call on us?
Yes.
Yes.
You are very quiet for some reason, so I'm gonna see if I can adjust my volume.
We can hear you.
We can yell.
Said no one ever. I'm sorry.
Um, the reason we're, we've asked to be on the agenda today is because uh, we're typically an exempt entity from paying taxes and uh, I realized on October twenty ninth that we had not received our tax statement. And at that point I had emailed Sherry and asked if I could get a copy. And then on Monday, the third, I received a, the delinquent notice in the mail stating that we had a penalty. At that point, we still hadn't received our invoice, so I sent Sherry a past invoice like what we had paid off of last year where it has the stubs on it. And she had sent it at that point. And I asked if we were able to have our penalties reduced um, due to the fact that we hadn't received our statement.
So on our tax statement, so first of all, I did get that email and I responded asking which property it was because I didn't have a parcel number or anything. And on the back of our tax statement, it says, check your statements. Failure to receive a tax statement will not relieve the taxpayer of interest accruing if taxes are not paid before the interest date. Be sure to pay taxes on all of your properties. The treasurer is not responsible for any taxes missed or omitted.
Yeah, and, and we realize you're not responsible and um, what we've done is in case this happens in the future or we don't receive the mail or, or invoice through the mail, we did put a reminder on our calendar so it doesn't happen in the future. Um, we, we know we've had issues with the mail in the past. Uh, and what we typically do is if we ever have a penalty or a late invoice, we do call the company and ask for them to be removed. Um, they're very good at working with us. I don't know if the supervisors or any of the departments have ever had issues with the mail system. But we, we do and some that we know that are reoccurring, like we, we automatically just have our credit card bill, for instance. It, it just automatically comes out of our account now and we reconcile once we get the statements in. Because we've had problems with the, the checks not making it to the, the businesses. So also we're asking honestly is just for grace on this one time. I mean, if it happens in the future, it's definitely on us. Um. We realize it's twelve dollars, but if the way the state has explained it to us that the city's not allowed to pay interest or late fees. And so we're just asking for you guys to make an exception this one time. Um, and to be able to, to work together with it.
I have a question for the treasurer to begin with. I, I assume this happens other than just this instance.
Yes.
Uh, how, how do we treat the normal citizens on this? Are they, are they still required to pay interest?
Yeah, yeah.
So we, this has been, and that's our current standard practice.
Unless they wanted to come to the Board and get them, see if, if for any reason they get waived. But it's really kind of a bad practice to do that because if you do it for one, everybody's going to expect that.
And we have.
Well, I would, I would argue that it just in one sense, no tie, is I understand that it's a, it's a general practice for, you know, uh, the citizens or the population or the individuals that are paying their property taxes. But, you know, we're considering this from one government entity to another government entity. Not, it wouldn't necessarily set a precedence for, you know, a general, a general citizen when we're bound by state auditor practices with late fees and penalties.
I don't even, if you go back, I believe this year, they paid a late fee on the tax that was also missed. So we didn't even waive it for the county.
We did not waive it for the county.
Good way for ourselves.
Correct.
My point is, and, and the point I want to make is none of this is our money. It isn't like, we're, you know, like when you're doing that with a private entity, there much to excuse you. Obviously, they're, they're appealing for your maintained business. But in this, in this case, it isn't our money that we're, you know, debating one way or the other. This is the taxpayer's money. Uh, yes, it's Dennison's taxpayer, yes, but it's also what the county's taxpayer receives. So that, that's the only reason setting a different precedent. I, I don't know what the exception for one government entity would be other than for another. I mean, I'm not trying to be competitive towards Dennison. I don't think we would treat Charter Oak or West Side any differently, would we?
No.
Would we not want to?
Well, typically cities don't pay taxes. I mean, we're, we're paying it because we, we have the property leased and, and that's why we pay taxes on it. Otherwise, we wouldn't be.
Do you make money on that property?
Yes, we lease the property.
Then you pay taxes on that or you're, or you're nothing compliant for it. Anything that we have in the government, like our, anything, our, our farm, anything, we have to pay taxes on.
Correct, as do we.
I, there you go.
Which, I don't know. Those are, we're, we're fully in understanding that, that we have to pay the taxes on it. We were just simply, I think what Jody's point was when she was saying that is it's not a, a normal practice to be, you know, looking for the, and then we noticed or we caught that we didn't have it in hand and we reached out saying we haven't received the document. You know, asking if we could get it because we also can't pay a bill without an invoice or we'll get dinged on that as well. So that was the whole point in explaining, you know, fully understand that we have to pay the property taxes on this parcel because we're making money on it. You know, we, we get that. It's just not a normal, where a normal, like any other entity would be looking for their property tax statement. You know, we did, we did catch that we didn't have it and we did reach out and that was just kind of what we were trying to explain. If a concern of setting a precedence or a concern about wave, if there's a concern about it, we understand. It's just our practice and our process so that we can, you know, show the auditors that we've done our due diligence when they've given us instruction to not pay finance charges or penalties. You know, we have to reach out and, and make that, that ask or that request, but we fully understand the supervisor's decision.
So Jess, your auditor told you that you shouldn't pay that?
Well, not this specifically. The auditor, we have standards of practice and they tell us that we are, you know, that we should, we're not to be paying. Obviously, we can't pay taxes. We're not supposed to pay fines, penalties. It's not saying that the state says cities are exempt from this. They're telling us that we can't pay them or if one shows up that we have to do our due diligence and asking for it to be forgiven if we didn't spitefully just not pay the bill, right? If, if it was oversight and we just spitefully didn't pay it, then yeah, we're, we're gonna need to pay it, but that's not the case here.
Well, that's curious because I, I would like to know, can you have them, could we get that, that code that they're using? That says that you're not supposed to pay that?
But Jody's making it out of that.
Neither. Yeah, I'd love to know that because maybe we, we shouldn't have paid it then. And if there's a code for that, then I'm in full understanding.
I just, we got a quick Google and it said the city is subject to the same rules as other taxpayers. If property taxes are paid late, the city will likely have to pay late penalties, just like any other property owner.
Where'd you pull that one up?
I just Googled.
Sorry.
Okay.
Generalities.
I mean, I, I Googled the same thing and I specifically said in Iowa, just to see if there was anything. I forget we got you Googler.
Right, in the context of a city failing to pay property taxes on a taxable parcel it owns, the standard delinquency interest and tax self provisions would apply. That's what this is.
Yeah, and I will tell you, it wouldn't be anything where, you know, if we would decide you're, you know, you're still subjected to that. It ain't, it ain't anything personal. I mean, we, we do focus on this board about being consistent. And, you know, sometimes we miss it and people will bring that back to our attention and we'll fix it. If consistency is the key in government, if you want to keep faith in the people.
Well, and that's my, my thing is the consistency, but I, I know when we talk about precedents, it, it is different and unique that it's not a private entity. But yet, when citizens of Crawford County look and say, well, they waived it for a city to county and that, you know, to me, we have to do things by the T up at our level so that it reflects on what everybody else sees.
Hear this if we.
I think we would too. I think that's their money basically that we're waiving also.
And we're talking twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars.
Yeah, but the principle of the matter, there wasn't just a couple of weeks, a month ago, our charger was in here telling us about how she had a citizen pretty high rate over thirty five dollars, but.
Pays a lot, yeah.
Their mistake.
And that was a post office function of post marking the envelope because they don't do it local anymore. And it's a different process on a USPS now, so similar, but.
Says they don't pay it, I think we're kind of obligated not waving.
If I can ask a follow up question because Terry, you mentioned that you didn't do it locally anymore. So the property tax statements are outsourced?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, and so I guess my question is, is that if it was ever, um, if we were ever in a position where we didn't have a statement, is the correct process or procedure still to reach out to Sherry? Or is there a quicker way of getting it if it's outsourced?
You still reach out to me.
Okay.
But I remember that email and, and I specifically asked, I mean, I can't remember what the email stated, but it didn't have enough information for me to look it up. So I reached there, I responded and asked which parcel you were talking about and I never heard back.
Yes, we were training and then, um, I got the mail on the third and received a delinquent notice. So I had emailed you, uh, on, I believe it was October twenty ninth. And asked for our, our tax statement and then we received our delinquent notice. And then, um, I had pulled out what we had paid prior years showing you what I needed and that we had not received it.
Do you have what you need now to present it for payment? Did you do the invoice at this time? You have it?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, um, Sherry did email that over, I believe, on the fourth. And then I had asked about, um, if we could get the penalties waived. And then, um, I believe she had said that it would have to go between, or in front of the Board of Supervisors. So we requested to be on the agenda at that time.
There we go. And here we are on the top.
I think.
Yeah. I, from what I found, what Craig has found is I don't see as there's Iowa code that does say they have paid.
It does say they do.
It just says the Iowa code outlines specific interest and penalty structures in areas like delinquent property taxes. There is no blanket code that exempts the city from potentially being subject to reasonable late fees or interest charges if the city is late paying its own bills or fulfilling contractual obligations.
So I think that knowing that, we can move forward with not waiving it.
Well, we just, yeah, take no action. I mean, the action was to waive it or not. Right, I mean, that's how I see it, I guess.
If you could take, um, I mean, Terry, maybe you can answer it. But if you could take action on the not waiving it so that we can put the minutes with our, just so that in our next audit, if they ask whether or not we made a request for the waiving, we can show that we made the formal request that we, we did what we.
I would really like to know what your auditors see in there. Yes, I mean, I.
Yeah, and we try hard at the county to not pay penalties and late fees. We contact credit cards, um, if, uh, if it was, uh, because of the lack of preparation of the department head. They are personally responsible for those late fees. Um, so yeah, we take a personal check from department heads for late fees on credit cards.
Making sure governments.
Well, and, and what they said in the past in minutes that we can find is that they deem it as not a good use of taxpayer money. So that's what, that's what gets noted in your audit if you're misusing taxpayer money. So we just need to show that we made the request and if we have to pay it, like we've said several times, it's twelve dollars. You know, that's, that's, we're just doing our due diligence so that we can make sure that we have informed the auditors when they're going through our things that we've done what they've asked us to do.
The stakes happened. It was just an oversight and, uh, I will make a motion that we, uh, do not waive the late charge.
We do waive.
Do not.
Do not waive the late charge, yeah.
I think that that's gonna be the best thing. Just keep this all on the.
Yeah, can we have motion by Jean?
I'd second that. I just want to clarify that this is due to our findings with part of a little bit of limited research or, I mean, and if they can.
You were limited.
Yeah.
You know, with some additional research that says it, I, I'd be totally, totally violent coming back and.
Revisiting.
Revisiting, but it's just. I would just see right now is it's the responsiveness of.
Right, you never know when you Google if you're getting accurate information.
We've got to revisit it.
And here again, I was trying to read through some Iowa code quick and, you know, how Iowa code can be interpreted by two different attorneys to equal two different things, so.
All the time.
Not gonna say definitely, but the researcher knows.
Yeah, if you could, if you guys could see what kind of code that that auditor is getting that out of, bringing it to them. I mean, that'd help us for future issues as well.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you guys for, for hearing us today. We appreciate you taking the time and, and moving our item up and, and for Sherry taking time to, to meet with us as well. So thank you.
Have some good training.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm kind of excited about the outcome, but yeah, training itself is, is kind of a, a, a time consuming thing, so.
Yeah, I'm excited for you guys making that transition.
Yeah, thank you guys. Have a great day.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Not on paper, say hi.
Alright.
Alright. My sad out being twelve dollars from the time you get online.
Time seven.
If they're really keeping an auditor off their, I get that.
No, I get it. I get it. It's, I mean, it definitely doesn't fall under the lines of public purpose.
Right.
But, you know, there are procedures, there are.
Yeah, but then what, what, what would be our answer to public purpose that we didn't execute? You see what I'm saying?
I know, no, exactly.
I mean, it's a both.
No, I'm not saying.
Got it.
Yeah, it was where we weakly needed.
Guys, no, I just had a great discussion about it. People look at how we operate. If we're not doing, if we're making exceptions for inconsistency is the.
Transparency and consistency is what keeps faith in our government.
Absolutely.
Because if you were a private citizen, you're like, why do you treat them different?
Right.
Especially the ones that were in here recently and they're.
They get in late in the mail and hey, it's just.
Well, you know, when it comes to the treasurer's office.
And they probably have all received tax bills in their homes.
Sherry's chops probably.
Not with you.
Twenty ninth.
You gotta be spot on. You're gonna have complaints of.
Right now.
Taxes and season.
I think that is right.
They might be able to bring something.
Yeah.
They got something. Obviously, that auditor's saying that, you know.
Well, I think what, what they're basically saying.
Then we could have, I mean, then we could have our attorney interpret that code for us.
From what we got a professional.
From a personal standpoint, I have used a customer of Wells Fargo. I've used their online bill pay for probably seven years. And you go in there, you know, fill out the online form, hit the submit button and they pay.
Yep.
And this month, I get my correspondence from the companies that bill me. And I would just throw it in the drawer, in the drawer and then I, beginning of the month, I take my stuff in and I pay everything, do it once a month and I'm done. And this month, as I won't do myself, I'm getting these past due and late one. I look at my checkbook and I'm like, I wrote down all the ones that I paid last month with Wells Fargo. So I'm like, did Wells Fargo not send them out? Or Craig, did you not hit the submit button? Did you fill the whole thing out and not hit the submit button? And I can't prove that Wells Fargo didn't send it out, so I can't, you know, it's like, maybe that is my responsibility. So I ended up paying, you know, late fees and.
Let me help you.
Just one, you know, I missed one month and it's like, some of these people have been a customer for thirty years. They're like, right, disconnect charges and you're like, holy cow.
Wait, I'm still here. Here I am.
So that would make you, that would make me curious, wonder if I, did I hit send? Exactly, did I hit send or was it Wells Fargo? Well, Wells Fargo never notified. It said, hey, we had this issue with sending out this, um, bill paid.
Or they did not get paid at all?
Right.
Oh.
I had them get their late. The late charges are gonna be because of the way mail goes out anymore.
Because it's still a check, whether I write the check or the bank writes the check.
So if they had a.
Seven to ten business days to get there.
Paragraph about we were changing the way that we structure our, you know, you might have, I don't know, but you probably didn't hit.
I probably didn't hit it a bit.
Probably this time, but with the late charges, it's gonna be because of the way the mail goes out. That's what's gonna happen. That's what happened.
Life gets busy and sometimes we don't hit.
Nobody's mad, nobody. You still have life, right?
And your life has been busy, so.
Well, that's, that's true.
That's true.
But you think like, doing it every month for seven years, you think you'd always remember.
And there's nobody at a bank that's gonna call you anymore about that stuff, so.
No, no, there's not.
I, every now and then I go through my drafts, emails, or what they send.
I, since that email has not been sent yet and read, I'm like, oh, shoot, standing two days later.
Better wait the number.
Sometimes.
Let's move on to supervisor reports. Kyle.
Uh, conservation board meeting last Wednesday night. What a longer one, but there was a lot of good information there. The main thing going on out there, I think they're gonna kind of set up a public hearing on this, but Ben Wallace of the DNR was there, just habitat guy for our district. And apparently we got a common cart problem and yellow smoke. But we'll eventually just take over the land.
But we'll eventually just take over the lake, so they're trying to develop a plan on how to remedy that.
Didn't they used to have that up at Lake Bueller and then they had a big cart tournaments all the time?
Yeah, and they, apparently they got it back up there again, but it's always, but it's always been a cart filled lake anyway. They can never drain it cause it's spring floods. It's just an ongoing problem up there, but uh why, how did it become a problem for us? It's hard, don't really repopulate themselves. These will.
Oh, these will.
Yeah, the grass cart that have been in that pond that have been, are sterile. So they just, these will overtake it and kill all the habitat.
How did they get in there?
Somebody probably be cute.
A lot of it, there's a lot of, apparently there's a lot of species of fish in there that were never stopped. That there, cause people being like, they wanna catch this out of this lake, so they bring some in and throw them in there, okay?
Thanks.
Just, where there's some, where, where, you know.
So how did they determine that we had that there is a common car problem? Did they?
Edit?
Did they? They, was it every other year or every, I think it's every other year they come out, we shock the water.
Right.
You know, fish counts and stuff, and I think that's when they noticed it, so.
They shocked the water?
Yeah.
They gotta probably kill the fish, float out and they float it up and. Throw it in, don't kill it.
No.
They throw dynamite out?
That will kill that.
I think, no, don't, I, I don't want somebody saying that, you know, they, they, they test the water and they can come up with answers, I guess, so I just always assumed they shocked the water.
Well, I, I've seen a load out. One time on our, on our family pond, I thought too that they shocked it, like people we have, they came out and netted it. They put nets throughout the pond and then the whole.
Maybe that's how they do it.
I have the, it'd be like, so it's what we had.
I can be corrected on that, but I'm saying, but anyway, they've noticed this problem and then they're thinking it might be a like a twenty twenty seven fix.
How do you fix it?
Wonder if that's how Peters' nets got.
So they need to, there's a couple of different ways, A, drain the pond completely.
Oh, wow.
Which, Chris did some elevation checks and designed, looked at the maps when they built the pond. He said, I only know that's possible, we're gonna completely create. But we can drain it down quite a ways and the other way is possibly chemical. Uh, rope, known, I think they call it, which is safe. I mean, you can put it in the water and swim it for them ten seconds, so it's not harmful to people. But that has there's some, I think EPA stuff right now where they don't even know if that's available. They think it's been back available, but Ben Wallace is gonna work on getting a plan put together and start rolling a child.
I mean, if you could shock it, you think you shock it, just take those out.
Right, the way that's the other way is, I don't.
Okay, he's normally applying.
Cause that would be, I would think we'd lose quite a bit of income if you drained it for that year.
Yeah, that's the big concern, but thank you, person pulling it down with six feet is what they're thinking to.
Okay.
That real known chemical is so much first surface area, so the, you can drain it down six feet, that pond gets quite a bit smaller. And the chemical cost.
It'd be on range again, so it'd probably fill up faster than.
Yep, I think they said in two thousand and five, they drained it down when they did a big dredging project that far and it was more within back to the hillside, but.
What's some of the biggest spots out there?
I think down by the dam is right, some direct thirty foot, yeah, so. So, that will be.
We got a dive team, send them on their car, but.
A lot of that, well, that's the thing, Chris said.
Our booty there.
Chris said there's a lot of divers out there, they've never said they've seen them, but so.
Huh.
Anyhow.
Interesting.
Very interesting.
Very interesting, which, yeah, so the concern of lost revenue and the cost of doing this project are all being considered when they're formulating the plan, so.
Right, but if you don't do something.
You don't do something.
You'll have nothing at the end anyway.
Themselves, right?
So, you know, you gotta think about longevity.
Uh, which there was another part of it too, is how do they get in there?
There any DNR grants?
Upstream ponds that have them in and heavy rain events and they go through the come downstream, so that's part of it as well, or they'd have to maybe do the same thing for the upstream ponds to keep them happening again.
What's the gentleman that comes in here that does our, looks after our overflow ponds?
Uh, remember.
Yep.
Uh, Rock, Connor, Roger.
That's, is that a DNR name that he does?
That is uh, the NRC, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
NRC, Orin, Roger, Orin.
Yep.
But I think he was more, he don't worry, he's not into the habitat, he's just in the make sure the dams aren't gonna blow out and break that, so.
So he's in the water conservator.
Yeah, but the good thing is there's grants available for this.
That's what I would want.
I thought they used uh Jim and Trevor Blankman before to they have a fish business that they stock ponds and they treat water and.
Well, that's good.
If not, then they were right on a man.
Okay. Well, and Ben is very educated in this, so maybe they use them to help with these projects, so.
Cool.
Uh, and a lot of other stuff, but that really was just business, but I just wanted, you asked last week about storm shelter. There's a grant application being formulated for a new storm shelter out there. I know you, Dave and I were asked to write a letter to you, a recommendation or support for this. And the concrete was, there was a plan set to global contractor to get a testament of what the concrete, they need to build total cost of the project, so. I got my nut.
He just hit me up today, I'll get that done when I get in.
Yep, so.
And.
And then they were starting to talk about budgets, if it's our time of year or something.
Sure.
That's it.
Okay, Craig.
Huh.
It would make me, didn't it?
It's longer.
I was gone all of last week, um but I did attend a summit's meeting on Monday night up at the holders. I'm not there, I thought, I was, I thought, well, I guess there was just gonna be a a meeting where they would be speaking to us sitting down instead, it was just an open house type of thing from five to seven where they had various stations and kind of manned by summit people. And you could just go from station to station and talk to people with summit. Uh, I did introduce myself to the new CEO, Joe Griffin was there. And uh, I thought, I was impressed by Joe, I thought that Summit should have hired him a long, long time ago. Um, he actually, to me, he used the word partnership. That is what Summit needs to be with the landowners.
There we go.
And that's where I think the whole structure about paying a fee, ongoing, um that Kylie, Kylie, Kaylee?
Kylie.
Kaylee talked about, she was here last time.
Kaylee's the one that just got married.
Okay.
Kaylee, Kaylee and Riley.
And I just uh, I I was impressed, Joe's got forty years of experience in the pipeline industry. Mostly, I'm sure ninety-nine percent of it is all in the oil business, but uh, um.
The impression is a sincere individual.
He did, he did, and I did, I did grab this, I'll just pass this around, but it's driving economic uh growth in Crawford County and what they project that they have been paying taxes to cities, schools and the county.
Let's take that down to pot, so you agree.
Exactly.
Was it well attended?
Well, it was, I think when I was, I was there from, I got there about four to five, cause I thought it would be, it was a sit-down thing and I wanted to get there early so I could introduce myself to Joe. And uh, I would say there was thirty to forty people there that were walking around, I was there till about, I don't know, ten after six, I think is when I left. But uh, um, so I thought it was well, I I guess well-attended, I thought. I I mean, cause you didn't really see it advertised anywhere, so I don't think they sent out letters, maybe they did to all the
Potential.
Uh, potential either people that hold the leak, hold the uh lease or people that potential lease, if they sent out letters, then I don't know.
Recognize if any of them is the folks that.
I did not, that was one of the surprising things.
Cause.
Haley was the only one there that I recognized, everybody else was somebody different.
As far as Crawford County citizens, did you recognize them as people that have interest in having one or not having one all the time?
Yeah. So I see they, I mean, they were in Shelby County, I think in the morning, they were going to Ida County uh the next day, I believe, but uh, it was, it was interesting, like I said, I I think Joe's uh Joe, Joe's, they should have hired him alone on that. He seemed like he was very interested, one, in the safety aspect of it, what they're gonna do for the county for preparation. Uh, but that's vitally important, that's one of the top things that Summit has to do moving forward as we're at as partners with um certainly the leaseholders, but we need to partner with the counties, with the cities, uh cause um and and I thought, I mean, I asked him the question, I said, is there any reason that you can't just go around the people that uh don't want it?
Yeah.
And uh, he's, he told me, he just said from, there's, and there was another guy there, there too, another engineer that was there. He just said, there's a couple of reasons, one with the path that they have approved with IUC. And uh, they don't wanna go back through that process and change that path because of all the stuff, I think, that they went through with IUC to get what they got approved. And then he just said, and then it is different, they wanna work with the landowners about where they go across people's property is important. It's not just, you know, if we get um access to your property, we wanna put it where you want it on your property. And so he said, if we change, you know, the person to the south of you, how that goes across, then it might change how we wanna go across your property and you might not like that, you're happy with how it was before. So uh, he, I said, I didn't think about that before. But uh, so that kinda makes sense, I mean, there, he's certainly happy with uh the percentage in Crawford County. Um, I think we're still at eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent, so we're in there in Crawford County that said sign leases.
About eminent domain, you know?
I didn't talk about it in the domain.
Good subject to stay.
Um, I mean, he just said that, you know, South Dakota did pass the law that no eminent domain for, for the pipelines. And so, I mean, they're not going through South Dakota, they're not going up to Dakota anymore. I mean, they're going through Nebraska, if they're gonna stop in Nebraska, if they're gonna, I was just gonna sequester it in Wyoming. Uh, it seems like that, so.
WNAX radio yesterday was.
What's that?
WNAX, you're getting a friend in the Midwest.
Five seventy.
Yeah, when you're in the tractor, you listen to that, and every half hour they play the same message over and over, so Columbus, Nebraska, world's largest carbon sequestration. Uh, my went online like recently and that's all going to Wyoming. Kind of private, and I never heard any Columbus thing that far away, so we should have been here if they were having trouble, but to the benefit of what you heard Monday night, they must have had a heck of a private partnership going on with all the landowners affected to build that pipeline to Wyoming. So, I was, it was interesting, cause uh, there we are fighting here in Iowa, Nebraska just built this four hundred mile pipeline to Wyoming, I've never heard anything about it. We would have thought we would have heard it something.
I think the eminent domain hasn't really bothered them.
As it should.
As it should.
I think that's the big challenge here, and I mean, Nebraska, a lot of them are bigger ranches out west. So you're dealing with probably less, and I'm just guessing, I don't know, they probably have less property owners. And uh, well, I mean, I don't, you know, especially when you go ahead and irrigate that kind of thing, you don't. It is a major crop ground like ours is, you know, more, more of it than that is pasture ground. So there's prob, so it's probably adds a lot of incomes where I'm heading with this, probably adds a lot of income to them, them specific property owners.
Who was the private partner? I should turn.
Okay.
Well, ADM is the main oh, is the main. I don't know if they own the tall grass facility, there's it's a tall grass trailblazer pipeline, what it's called.
Okay.
And uh, ADM is a big player, so.
Interesting.
That's all I got.
Take a break, Ben is here, we'll get back to you guys. Go ahead, Ben.
Morning. Morning, Ben.
Morning.
Morning, Ben, I know, today. Busy.
Kind of a stopping guy, so everything, you didn't get one in July.
For sure didn't get one in July.
Well.
I was glad to hear that.
Again, with uh, an underground utility department, Vanilla Electric, uh, they, they must be doing some work there by Vanilla there. Uh, along one forty-one and then coming down uh, three hundred and twentieth street uh and jogging over three hundred and seventy down to W Avenue, uh, some electric line. Must be something to do with the FEMA during the disaster last, last year, I must have some, somebody's coming from that direction to relocate their supply. And so due to the disaster, but they applied for a permit to bound, but while we're on electric line within the right way and uh, they'll be pouring the fifth cohorts and uh, and and the greatest, but I guess some pretty general of that, that you have a permit for that. Construction, well, good news is, I'm hoping today is the day that we officially open the bridge over there. Sweet.
You got a text.
They, yeah. I think a lot of people are treaty, I like it, so, um, I know, I, that's from keeping barricades across the road and uh, keeping people from going through it, and it's safe. But it's not technically open, but today it really should be, they, they're coming back ten o'clock to do their payment markings.
And then they have to put up like some of the rain, yeah, that's what.
Uh, no, they won't have bridge rail, uh, do the slow speeds coming into town, uh, approaching it, it's due to the bridge, bridge rail or approaching rail, so it wasn't necessary for that. So, so the work is done, I believe they got their object markers placed on the bridge. Anything else other than the uh, payment market side will do, can be done. You know, we can open it traffic if they, you got some minor seeding, which they may do this afternoon, uh, and uh, some minor things that are gonna be done after, after it's opened up. Opened up, so.
So we could have ribbon cutting if we wanted to, right?
Go up with a ribbon across there and stop the track. Sure, let's do it.
It'd be a big ribbon, huh? Alright, that's good news.
But uh, but yes, hopefully, end of the day today, so all bridges are open in Crawford County. All bridges are open in Crawford County.
That's a broad statement.
I think so.
Yes.
Think about that, we're.
I just stopped at one, but that was down in Menoffe, or Harrison County, it worked out.
I know, I think you're right on that, I think that is uh, all bridges then.
Temporarily.
But um, our great crew, they're, they're up on two and thirty street today, I think they're fishing up, uh, went back some topsoil on, on the, the project today. Uh, and then they're gonna move down, just start working on the trellis properties and uh, get that shaped up before things freeze over and uh, that whole way have a work done, put a fence around that, and uh, so we'll have that ready for.
So you got some robust corner posts there.
Yeah.
Looks like they might knock one of the dozers and start rolling away.
I guess maybe it came from a bridge.
Hooked that with a disc.
Okay.
Well, we don't want it to go in.
I don't think it's going in.
I think that stopped. That puppy. Our, our guys, uh, they are doing the fencing, uh, it's not their, not their typical work, but I, we can get some fencing done, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, uh, bridge crew, they're going to uh, they're, they're working on uh, finishing up that, our channel pipe on two and thirty street and that, that road should be done, uh, once, once we get that completed. And uh, I spoke with your guy earlier about timelines and that, we'll get that figured out with the, etc. But um, but uh, and then they're gonna move down to the Vale Bridge with that two and forty-third street that comes alongside of it and they're gonna do that shaping up, uh, now that they're able to get in there, do the doorwork there. We're gonna be with uh, long lines, they're gonna move a, a handle of, of where they got their, their. We're gonna be with uh, long lines, they're gonna move a, a handle of, of where they got their, their, uh, communication line there and uh. And uh, give them where they can move that, how much they can move it and uh, to where our real shape up where uh, uh, approach. Kind of what it was anyway, have a nice radius if trucks was to be coming around there, so we're not clipping our edge of our bridge. Brand new bridge. We wanna, either I want severely insufficient to where they know they can't do it, or really sufficient to where they are gonna make it no matter what. Uh, none of us, I think I can make it, so. But uh. But uh.
Cause all the trucks don't do that.
Roads ride crew, they are shut down for the season, uh, I, it does, I think it's taking a little bit of inventory right now on uh, on what was used. And uh, hopefully might be looking at it for next year, but aside from that, uh, they're done seeding and spraying, so. At this time, I, I have Jason Meredith here with Rural Water, uh, he, uh, he asked to, to come up to, to the board meeting here to discuss. A proposed uh, uh, water, uh, install, water line installation uh, there on Buffalo Road. Uh, I'll try to turn it over to Jason to propose what he's wanting to do.
Thanks, Ben. Um, I know Ty, I don't think I've ever met the rest of you, but I'm Jason Meredith with West Central Iowa Water. Um, we've got a project, um, got a gentleman, Jerry Lally would like us to run Rural Water too, my, my, I have to go. Um, this is kind of a rough map, um, just being bent a little bit ago, it might change a little bit, obviously. If you guys would be okay with it, we would um. Put the permits in and everything with the measurements and all that stuff, so that this isn't by any means viable, um. It's gonna require us to, or I'm gonna call it the creek from the, from the uh. The road that's part of the dam, or that is the dam that goes in the bottom of the hill there. Um, I've talked to the NRCS. They are okay with us doing whatever we want, because they were the ones that I think funded the project, I mean, I talked about that. I don't, we did run the NRCS office and they worked fine, that's what I believe it is, but. I guess what I would be here for is, I talked to Chuck with the landfill. He believes it would be your guys' responsibility to grant an easement for us to put the water line in the landfill.
Makes sense, we're, we are the owners, that's why I feel.
I got an easement to the, as you can see, it's the north of landfill property, I got an easement there, um. And I think Ben would agree that ditch, obviously we do go in the ditch, this is not a ditch I would like to go in. I think it's gonna be hard to hold the trench, if you get any sort of moisture, I think that trench is just gonna wash away, no matter how much you pack it or anything. Um, so ideally, an easement from, from the county would be, would be perfect for us. I know Jerry's been waiting for water for quite a while, um, I've been going back and forth with. The DNR on whether we could put stuff in there and we have stayed away from the garbage, I think Chuck has a pretty good idea of where we can go and where we can't. Um, so I think we're pretty safe being, I think, down in the creek, we'll probably be out a little ways further. Just to get away from the rip route and the, the pipe that's down there, but um. Twenty-ish feet in from the fence, um.
That should be safe, be out of the cell.
I would think so, yeah, yeah. Um, the, the one question we, one of the questions we had was if you would allow us to pull a couple of posts at the parking lot area there. And just trench right through the middle of that, so we don't have to swing out, maybe catch some garbage or not, no. We can just trench right through there, put the post back in, pack it good, fill it back in with rock and.
This parking lot.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's up on top.
No, down by the dam.
It's down towards the dam.
I think that peasants forever or something, help it find that trail out there, they're gonna park, you know, shelter right there, so.
I think I know where you're talking.
Yeah, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Alright, you can put it back anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I know, uh, talking prior to meeting here, when you, when you stepped in, uh, we were talking about where it does come up the hill there. And at the top of the hill where it starts to curve around, uh, where it wants to come into the, the rope right away, basically, I was questioning, uh. Uh, what about keeping it within the landfill, you know, that way we're, we're not in the road right away and if we think it's, you know, in our ditch, ditch moving up. It'd be better, you know, certainly coming up that hill, we, we, we are hoping to avoid having it in the ditch area that where water's gonna obviously run. But coming around those pine trees on the north side of those pine trees and then coming over across the road and uh. Uh, his, his concern was of course the, the trail that I mentioned, uh.
We don't.
Pecans firm funded, but uh, I, coming along that fence line on, in between the pine trees on the road, uh, he was concerned about the disturbance to that trail. And uh, I thought it's being something that would, would be allowable, I guess.
I guess I'd rather have that trail disturb a little bit versus having.
And I'm, and I'm not so sure, I'd have to look at it again, but we might be able to stay like on the north side of those trees. And then we just cross the trail one time, is all we do, with that, we could get that packed in there pretty good and get it back to the way it was, um.
I just said, I think that'd be preferable as opposed to having it that close to the road.
Um, I know our contractor's got a couple of weeks of work to do, so it'll be at least a couple of weeks before we do anything.
Or you have to stall.
I'd like to get it done, you have to stall, yes, yeah. Obviously, I don't think you guys can make a decision today, it's just a discussion item, but.
Right.
Um. If you kind of give me.
Certainly don't have a problem with that.
I don't, yeah, if you give me a little direction, I can get the permits. In by the end of the week, so maybe you guys, if you wanna make a decision on it next week, that's great.
As a well that's interested in this project.
They are.
Well out the landfill is not holding up its own anymore either, so.
And I did a, a, a quick estimate for them this morning, I haven't told Chuck this, but you're looking at probably between thirty and forty grand to get water down there.
Oh.
So, cause what, the, the way we do it is, say, say you wanna do it, the landfill and Jerry would split to Jerry's house. And then landfill will pay the rest to, to the landfill.
Okay.
Um, and I think it's another thirty-five, thirty-six hundred foot somewhere in there from.
Good time to do it, good time to do it.
Right, yeah.
Not, not saying that we can't come back and do it again later, I mean, if that's, and I, I'll call Chuck today and give him that information.
Could, would, would that be in your landfill budget then?
It wouldn't come out of my own budget, but you know, there's that much cushion of measures.
Let's hope not.
I mean, we, that's out there to make zero money, so I mean.
Right.
Try to. It'd have to be a planned expense of that or.
And then, and, and it's there, so it's gonna be, it's not like. I'm not seeing, um, the, our products go up much in price, maybe the, the. The construction costs might go up a little bit here and there, for sure.
But it was exercise line you put on, whether we do it now or later.
No, it'd be the same.
Tying in whatever.
Yep.
Is this, is this a two inch or?
It'd just be a two inch line, yeah, yeah.
I suppose the good thing for that is you'll have it up the top of the hill there to be able to tie into doing this.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead, move forward.
Yeah.
We can get on the agenda next week with you, Ben.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get permits to him this week, um, as to where we're actually gonna cross the road.
And I'll say this is, you're on a lot of uh, objection from the public, so I think if you consent to the board, we can probably.
And that was our concern with the, I don't know how much that walking trail gets used, that was our concern, if we trench right down the middle of that. And it doesn't, it's probably gonna settle a little bit here and there. I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with that, I don't think it's used a lot, if it's a vest for every deal, I don't wanna mess with that. Um.
I think it'll be alright.
Yeah, you know, we, we can look at it definitely.
Well, Craft County, we're very lucky to have Rural Water.
Yeah, we're spending, spending a lot of money right now, keeping things going, so, yeah. So.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, so, so yeah, uh, he'll, like you said, he'll get me a, a permit for, for uh. For what they're proposing to do there and uh, put it on the jump for next week. Uh, aside from that, they have a discussion item, we are hiring for a modernization, we're, it's been advertised, we are taking, taking applications for. We're gonna try, we'll continue to take applications for probably a week here and uh, and then uh, what we get for applications, we'll. How many, have you reviewed?
Said?
A couple, a couple, uh, we'll review what we get, uh, and uh, invite a few to be interviewed.
When would they start? Right away.
Um. It would be. Yeah, pretty well, oh, we brought, get them in as soon as we can, get them, start training.
When they start, we'll have a big closer.
Yeah. I, I, I think it'd be best, you know, best interest to get whoever we're gonna get, get them over there, getting some practice behind them before snow starts flying.
First lesson, tire change.
I think it was Rick Nelson that started it, it was within a week or so, wait. Big two thousand ice snow event started.
Nothing like throwing them in the deep end.
Yeah.
It'll only get better after that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure got easy after a while.
But uh, so from that, that's all I really have.
I just got some, Ben, are you attending the Hunter Keny's meeting?
Yes, I did, I did get that off here, uh, I forget what the date it is.
Twenty first, twenty Friday. And then I did at the, when I went to the summit meeting, I did talk to uh, Tim Baumann for a while, and Tim just mentioned about. Intersections and crossing roads, um, that he was doing some research and I think he's got some, maybe some. Other county ordinances or, um, that he wanted to, I think, talk to you about. And then I said, we can certainly let me know and I can get it on the board for a discussion item, something to talk about, so. Tim contacts you over the next two, three weeks, I would guess, that's what it'll be about.
This would be in regards to.
To, to summit, to how we, I guess, what our rules uh, are as far as allowing currently, how you, we do it with utilities. You know, crossing roads or long roads, that sort of stuff.
Sure.
And how, how it would work for a pipeline.
Pipeline, okay, yeah, 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 that's something we're definitely gonna have to, uh.
And I know he said he talked to Paul exactly before, and uh, but he just has, I think that there's, I don't know if some counties have passed some different ordinances. Or, or what, and he said, I, I'm doing my research, once I gather all my information, so then I wanna talk to Ben and then I wanna talk to the board, I say, not a problem.
Really, we have our utility uh, permits, it kinda outlines, you know, how that we wanna minimum depths and whatnot. Pipeline of larger nation may bear a little bit of alteration to, you know, wanna make sure that they are remaining, because it is a. A little different nature, uh.
Right.
Kinda like natural gas would be, that's like the different nature, uh, pipeline that, that's a, over water. Uh, we'll wanna make sure that they're getting adequate depth, and I think they know that, I think they anticipate having to go deeper. You know, and uh, and, and make more precautions, so with their pipeline that uh, typically someone that you're gonna make. I, I think they preemptively, they won't do that, but we, we'll discuss, uh, we'll know what our minimums are, we can certainly discuss all things, alright. So I'll write down with you then, we'll be, I'll be. Alright, sounds good, alright.
Or we start to count it.
Yeah. We can do that. Did you have any supervisor reports?
Oh, that typically was a quiet week for me, actually had no other meetings of, um.
Okay, and Gene, you said you didn't have any?
Not much, next week will be, it'll be thirty minutes next week, cause uh, I have all of them next week. Public health, uh, West Central Iowa, and SCI, empty, all, because they wanted to do it today. And we couldn't get it done for today, so. Everything's good, so give us a next. Kyle was planning that paper somewhere, see.
Did we talk about the annex and getting a dumpster in there and in the meeting? I know a couple of us talked about.
We have talked about, yes, yeah, put that deadline on, uh, yeah.
Are you okay with Jeff kinda getting something?
Yes.
Organized and maybe a small team of people to.
Yes.
Assist getting that emptied out.
It's, we have to, it looks, well, I'm very happy with the fact that uh, Zach came and took the things that he could use. That's a great.
He did get his stuff out of there, perfect.
The blankets that, oh, with the cots are gone and the little packets that had shampoo and things, and if we had it, uh. That's all being housed in the boat, where they have the boat, yes, it was all in a central location. He found a triage, uh, thing that was just there, it was like Christmas or, because he was thinking he needed to order one. And there it was, brand spanking new, a little triage, a garden setup, so. Uh, there's been some good use of getting those things that probably were bought with grand dollars, you know.
Right.
Few years ago, being put in the right spaces, what we're down to is. Getting all of the personal information out of there, and if it, if it isn't going with them for some reason, and we need to get the shred. Guy over there, get it all shredded and out of there, hanging on to it isn't doing us any good, we either need it or we don't. And so, uh, setting it.
November twenty-first, they're gonna go through the building.
We're having our public health meeting on Monday, so I, maybe I should add that to it, to see if any of the public health board members wanna come and help.
There eventually.
They'd be welcome.
If it's not gone by that day.
Yeah.
Don't, don't cry.
Right, we have to get that deadline, I know there's a shop there that Beth still wants and uh, you know.
But like those, the doc, any of that personal patient documents, they need to take to the new building. And tread out of that building, because we don't.
It's fine with.
I'm not taking responsibility for the patient records.
It's my understanding that one of the reasons that those didn't go originally is that that Eve spout on the north side, uh.
I thought you got that fixed.
We did now, so, so that probably has been taken care of, so.
Maybe it was still a not, still not fixed properly.
You know, it's always, well, that's why it didn't go, and now it should be able to go, but in their defense. We need to keep daily operations running and uh, you know, to take another time off of, you know, you've got a lot of daily things to do. It's hard, but we just need to take time to do that.
So we don't have the same mistake as we had in the other, but should we have the water shut off in that building?
We have the furniture, we don't have building.
Yeah.
We do, um, Carol control went in there to make sure everything was operational that way.
Okay.
So, it is being heated currently.
Very curious.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the water part, cause if there are people in there working, we kinda need water.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Okay.
But it is time to have that look like a nice showplace when the real estate agents wanna show it.
Exactly.
It's not imagined without all this stuff here.
We could just shut it off in the basement, or, and then if somebody's there to work, and we could turn it back on, you know, we could isolate. In the event of that. Think that when nobody there scares me, that. Don't work, you know, we have.
It should screw you.
Cause.
Maybe ask Jeff.
I will ask Jeff.
He might, he probably can find it.
But we'll have a discussion uh, on Monday at noon. Before we're gonna help that's gonna look, and once we get it cleaned out. Then I think we should get the realtors together again and see if it's time for a price reduction, to get it moving again, to get some more interest, uh. The uh.
What's the square foot of the building up and down?
Can't even guess for yet, I could look at our, our.
A listing.
The listing out there, it's out there with all of our agents, but we had a little interest, and now it's just kind of, we have to get some interest again.
Yeah.
Anything you guys can do to get that uh, back on the tax rolls, it's what we're all about, so. Good. Alright.
Great.
Two minutes, timer's going.
Take a quick break, you want a citizen input before the cameras, you're gonna wait. It's up to you. We can do that, and then we just finish up with this, any citizen input? Yeah, it is. And we don't have anybody here, so. Awesome. I got a pest with, I've got a problem with pesky birds.
I don't think this is gonna take very long.
Train hawks at county landfill site. Clean them up.
Here she comes, it's just like on cue, we say we need it, you got it for us, thank you.
No, who's getting all the books, but.
Looks like there's about one for each of us. I think there's one for us.
So we need to get a hawk to clean up the plant, clean loose on our tower.
There you go. Does the handler come with it? The uh. There's an article in here about an Ohio thing that reduced their. Act overdoses. Yeah, read that, strengthens its substance abuse response, Montgomery County.
I'm not gathering Iowa?
No, 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 it's not in Ohio.
Oh.
But it's on the medical paper.
That's okay. Was it that pathetic? How many people didn't vote for the school board and things like that?
We didn't what?
Didn't vote, we didn't even go out and vote.
Really?
Two, I think, like, I think Dave Andrews got like three hundred and seven as a write-in, actually got more as a write-in. Actually, I have more as a write-in than the people that are actually on the ballot. And I just kinda glanced over it. Yeah, in the paper. Right now it was. Yeah. So.
So Dave Weber's got more write-ins.
I think I kinda glanced through it, but uh, Dustin Logan got about as many write-ins as Jennifer Super, who was actually on the and then the other guy. Well, we'll see that all here.
But there was nobody other. Who else was on, but uh, saying they would do another uh?
Well, he, he actually.
He was a right.
He was a write-in. Jennifer, Jennifer had her.
Jennifer was down for the council.
Yeah. And then Dave Peterson, you know, had thrown his hat in the ring and done a uh,
To be a mayor.
No, to be a, take, take Dustin Lucas.
Yeah, council. So, so I mean, Dustin really didn't have anybody write in against him.
We'll see who, I think they might have written in a few names.
Yeah.
I think Pam got second. I thought Pam had thirty-two write-ins.
Yeah.
Well, I did, yeah, that's surprising. All people are probably disappointed that she wasn't running.
I think Dustin will do.
She does a good job.
Pam doesn't.
Pam thought, Pam told me she thought Dustin did great job.
I think he will do it, no doubt.
But you, you always have some other writings. I mean, every, every time we do one of these, it's Mickey Mouse is on right.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Yeah. Mickey Mouse made it a lie.
At least there was no senate jobs open, so I shouldn't be on the ballot this time.
They could have wrote in tight. Maybe you've been written in for mayor.
Oh, Charter Oak, right? I'm not in City Limb, I'm sorry.
Oh, shoot.
I live on the.
I need a annex here.
Thank you, Stavy said that to me.
Oh, did she?
I said, if you're just trying to get under my skin, then I have success.
It's working.
Yeah.
She got reelected, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, she did. I think like ninety-five votes to complete this. Nobody had it all memorized, but. It's just.
You know, Terry Cohen didn't get reelected.
He did. Did he run? Did he win a few?
Well, I think so. I don't know. I mean, I, so, and he was always engaged. That's why I'm very, very engaged person for a mayor.
And I think his wife used to be on the council, but she.
I think she still is. She got brought in.
I think she didn't wanna be in.
You don't, you don't.
Good job, though. She's very articulate.
Well, I think that has to be.
Oh, yeah.
They're good, they're good to me.
They are.
Terry might have upset enough. You know, you, you don't, you upset half your town and you're probably not gonna win that one.
We're gonna get country school with Karen.
You're gonna have to.
You're gonna be flipping. I mean, City Park will be more caring because cities are in a precinct.
Country school.
Or you know what I mean? All in one where some of the schools.
Alright.
That are gonna.
Kenny B. family was.
So.
For some of your small lectures, it's very, very.
Yeah.
So do you want me to?
Same amount of work. I do. I, I want you to hold the absentee book.
Okay.
So when he's doing like the city of Aryan, they'll do the precinct first and then you'll chime in with the absentee portion.
Okay.
Jeremy, can you move?
Really, you're the absentee book.
Oh, really?
So absentee, that's going to look different.
Thing about outside.
Yeah.
During I got there and we're trying to save money. So that's a, yeah, there, there was stuff. Oh, we didn't, but still.
But like you, normally you're gonna look down here for a whole of the absentee.
I just go back to the data. I see the joke. I have a language. I come from just absentee.
No, it'll be, it'll become smooth sailing.
Yeah.
Before long, we're gonna start.
Little history. Bless it.
That land. That there, roll back.
By Ron Ray and Marion, by the.
And Marion and my mom went to school together.
I remember you said that.
Yeah.
Country school.
She don't live there anymore. I think I'm demanding.
Oh, yeah, I think my mom.
So these are just ones that were sent mailed in or sent in when they came up here and voted.
Or voted here in person and nursing home.
Prior to the election.
Always have candy on it for the kids. Are you ready, sir?
Yeah.
Awesome. Oh, yeah. That's where you'll start. Right there.
Let's move out there.
No, I thought they sold me. You'll get one.
Are you sure?
Uh, it pops.
Alright. We ready? Alright.
We're born ready.
The master.
You always have the master.
He's got longevity. Low hanging fruit. Forever, sorry.
Alright.
Alright.
Alan. Oh, yeah, City of Aryan.
Eddie?
Yeah.
Okay, Aryan Mayor write-ins. Uh, Jeff Stevens, nine.
Okay.
Jeff Stevens Senior, one. Mark Grant, one.
Okay. I thought I showed nine, two.
And then you're two scattering.
Yep.
And then two, was, was something up there?
That's eleven, actually.
Eleven.
I know it looks like two, to me, too. Two hashes.
So we wanna just go right to absentee?
Yeah, do absentee. So then he's done with that.
Right. Absentee for uh, City of Aryan, zero.
That's what I have, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. So you can flip that one over. You're done with that one.
Alright.
Okay, you wanna go to Aryan City Council at large?
Yeah.
Write-in. Michelle Stevens, eight.
Okay.
Christie Stevens, nine. Kenny Bean, five. Kenneth Bean, one. Michael Stevens, one. Denny Knight, one. Carol Beerman, one. Chris Stevens, Christie Stevens, one. Stiffus? Should I try to say it? It might just be misbroke.
Doesn't matter.
Jeff Stevens, one.
Sorry. It always matters.
So twenty, twenty-nine total write-ins?
Yes. So you're not gonna, don't count under votes.
Yep, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absentee, zero.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Okay.
Major, the Metropolis of Buck Grove.
You got a, you got an Aspern Mall? You got an Aspern Mall.
Nope, he doesn't. Not in his precinct.
Okay.
But yeah, it'll be easier if we do an entire precinct.
Yep.
You guys are just gonna be jumping around a little bit.
Alright, Buck Grove Mayor.
Buck Grove Mayor. Uh, Terry Cohen, two. Write-ins, four. Uh, Kevin Stover, four.
Yep.
One hundred. Absentee, Terry Cohen, four. Write-in, Kevin Stover, three.
Correct.
Well, straight.
So who won?
Kevin Stover.
I won. Why? I won.
Okay, so. Go ahead. Can I throw that sheet over and ask Paul or do I?
Um, don't.
Okay, alright.
Thanks for asking. No.
Alright.
Okay, you ready? Buck Grove City at large, City Council at large. Uh, Karen's, or excuse me, Michelle Stover, seven.
Yep.
Aaron Schrader, Schroder, seven. How he pronounces it for sure. Uh, Derek Schweri, four. There's eight write-ins. Derek Schweri, four. Karen Cohen, three. And Lois Johnson, one.
Yep.
Absentee, uh, at large Buck Grove, Michelle Stover, five. Aaron Schroder, five. Eighteen total write-ins. Darren Cohen got seven. Uh, Louis Johnson, Lois Johnson got four. Derek Schweri got seven.
Yes.
Like, all of Buck Grove was on the ballot. Sorry.
It always is, yeah. Except they don't put their names on there always.
Okay, ready to go now, city? Mayor, Mayor?
Yeah, I will. I just get down to city.
Oh, let me know when you're ready.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll protect all cities. Yes. Oh.
You ready?
Yep.
Alright, Dow City Mayor, Cody Meyer, fifty-two. Write-ins. Dustin Durbin, one. James Stankouler, one. Doyle Siglin, one. Kami Hass, one. Ace Edelman, one.
Mayor, ten. So, fif-
Fifty-two and five.
Fifty-two and five, alright.
Got it.
Yep.
Absentee Mayor, Cody Meyer, one.
Yep. Okay.
Um, there's, you have most of the season.
Dow City, City Council at large?
Yep.
Jennifer Williams, forty-four. Write-ins, thirty-four. Eighteen for Doyle Siglin.
Uh, You're Dow City.
Dow City. Is there two of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Comes to fill a vacancy.
This is at large.
That was, darn it. Forty-four and eighteen.
Yeah, for Nick, forty-four. Thirty, thirty-four, or forty-four for Williams and then Jennifer Williams. And then thirty-four write-ins, eighteen for Siglin. Doyle, uh, Nick got Stankouler, got twelve. Beth boat got one. Kami has two. Ace Edelman, one.
Alright, yep.
Okay. Uh, absentee Jennifer Williams, zero. Doyle Siglin, write-in, one.
Yeah.
Okay, Dow City to fill the vacancy at large?
Yep.
Alright, Ace Edelman got fifty-five. Write-ins, twenty-nine. Nick Stankouler, nine. Doyle Siglin, fourteen. Beth boat, one. Kami Hass, one. Ace Edelman, one. Uh, Nate Mueller, one. And Cody Meyer, one.
So except for Doyle in the write-ins, what's the total?
Twenty-nine. Oh, except for Doyle?
Yes.
Uh, that'd be fifteen.
Thank you. Our names.
Uh, absentee Ace Edelman, one. And write-in Nate Miller, one.
Yep. But I don't really have.
Boyer Valley School District Director.
Back here.
At large.
Behind the cities. Who are yours? Boyer Valley?
Al, Al.
Boyer Valley School District. First is city.
Oh.
Then we go to school districts.
Boyer Valley. That's a little bit at large.
Three or two or three of them, I think.
We go, Boyer Valley.
School district. At large or at large, right?
At large.
Ready? At large for Boyer Valley School Director. Elizabeth Heistad, Heiston? Easton, sorry. I'll, I'll get it right. Alright. Elizabeth Easton, eighty-one. Write-in, zero.
Okay.
Absentee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you?
No, go ahead. I would go into the next one.
Absentee Elizabeth uh, Houston, one.
One.
Write-in, zero. Okay.
Boyer Valley School Director, District One.
There.
Paul Cogdill, eighty-two. Write-ins, thirty.
Absentee Paul Cogdill, one. Write-in, zero. Alright.
District Two for Boyer Valley School Director. Joette Cogdill. I say that right? You said. Very good. Seventy-four. Write-ins, four. Anyone else, one. Kelly Garrett, one. Mike, Mike Monzel, one. And Jen Miller, one.
Okay. Absentee Joette Cogdill, one. Write-in, zero. Alright. So, that should be about.
Oh, I don't see that. What's your next race, Ty?
What's that?
What's your next race?
Next one is Charter Oak Ute School Director, District Two.
Alright. Well, here.
Did anybody show up to vote down there in Charter Oak?
Well, yeah.
Uh, it says, it's you, it says on mine here, school dir- Charter Oak Ute School Director, District Two, Jill Clinker, zero.
Yeah.
Tanner Weed, zero. Write-in, zero.
Yep.
I'm glad if anybody.
I'm sorry. You're right. Not in Dow City, they didn't. But there's Charter Oak and SRK, which they didn't jump in SRK.
Charter Oak absentee Jill Clinker, eight. Tanner Weed, four. Write-in, zero.
I think there's a time.
Thank you. And now I have to do it.
Next one is Dennison School Director at large.
I'm here for you.
Okay, Louis.
Shering.
Shering. Eight.
Yep.
Dave Weber's, nine. John Held, three. Write-ins, the river.
Yep.
Oh, Shering.
Absentee Louis Shering, forty-one. Dave Weber's, fifty-four.
Okay.
John Held, forty-nine. Six write-ins. Rachel Deasy, one. Ryan Bigness, one. Kurt Kastner, one. Mitch Kinsey, one. Tony Trehu, two.
Still with six, so. Yep.
It was six, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Over to IKM Manning School District Director at large.
We'll have your name on it. IKM Manning, at large.
Hey.
E C A B.
Ready?
Yep.
Lucas Potoff, zero. Jeremy Puck, zero. Nick Scheckinger, four. Write-ins, two. Grant Strachey, two. Absentee.
Should be four more under votes.
We don't count under votes. You said two.
Yeah, you said.
Oh, and you named the two. Got it. Yeah, no, it's under scattering because it's less than four percent of the total vote cast. Nick or uh, Strach- Grant Strachey ran Nick, or, uh, Strach- Grant Strachey ran for a position, another director district position, so sometimes those people get written in, in a other position that they didn't necessarily run in.
Gotcha.
So, that's why you got that run in the poll. And it doesn't count towards him, or it could if he got enough votes, but he didn't.
Okay.
IKM Manning, uh, School District at-large, absentee Lucas Potoff, forty-one. Jeremy Puck, forty-six, Nick Scheckinger, forty-six, write-in, zero.
Yeah, yeah.
That's close.
Okay.
Okay, IKM Manning Director, District One B.
Right.
Amy Fertedine?
Fertedine.
One, zero, write-ins, zero.
All right.
Okay, absentee Amy Fertedine, fifty-three, one write-in, Bonnie Johnson, one.
IKM Manning School Director, District Two B. Josh Lind?
Lindy.
Lindy. Raised from Bavaria. Okay, Josh Lindy, zero. Grant Strachey is five, and write-ins are zero.
Okay.
Uh, absentee Josh Lindy, forty-two, Grant Strachey, thirty-six, write-in, zero.
Oh, yeah.
IKM Manning School Public Measure, T-H.
Okay.
Yeses are zero, nos are six, or is that sixteen?
Six.
Six. Write-ins, zero.
Yes.
But you can vote for that absentee here?
Yep. I had to show on some.
Yep. Might be towards the back, you might have to just dump and buy that.
Oh, here we go. IKM Manning School Public, uh, Measure absentee, yes, forty-nine, no, thirty-seven.
That's what I was showing.
It's outstanding. Iowa Western Community College Public Measure, S-E. South East Director.
Oh, I like it.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yep.
Yes is three, no is one, write-ins, none.
There.
Absentee, yes, zero, no, zero.
Oh.
Super clean. You're done.
We're, that's the whole list, but nothing, you know what, I'm pretty impressed with the, the folks down there. There was no Mickey Mouses, there was only one that was sent to anybody else.
How many votes anybody else has got over here?
No.
That should be the front.
What race you're on, okay?
Okay.
And that's over here, the official title.
Okay.
Yeah.
City of Deloitte Mayor.
Deloitte Mayor, Deloitte, oldest town in the town.
Write-in, oldest uptown, too. Write-ins, twenty-two, Tyler Brosh, fifteen, and Jerry Mathias, seven.
Let me guess that.
I'm sorry. I am ready. I was told to move it along.
You're able to move it along.
I just felt that bus tire run right over me.
Okay, Jerry Brosh.
Tyler.
Tyler Brosh.
Seventeen. Jerry Mathias, seven. Write-ins, they're the write-ins.
Absentee.
Total's twenty-two.
Say it again?
She's saying seventeen.
No, seven. Tyler Brosh, fifteen.
Oh, fifteen.
Jerry Mathias, seven.
Okay, yep.
Okay, we good?
Yeah.
All right, we'll get used to it.
Absentee, all write-ins, twelve. Tyler Brosh, five, Jerry Mathias, five, Jerry Lorenzen, two.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
City of Deloitte Council at-large. Uh, Matthew Gosh, nineteen. Gloria Anderson, fifteen, Libby Schillerberg, five, Robert Wolf, twelve, Connie Mulligan, fourteen, Eric Greggy, seven, Jerry Lorenzen, six, Alan Johnson, five, John Kelly, seven, and Callan Landra, one.
All right.
Yeah. Yep.
Did I go too fast?
Well. No, I was saying.
You have a question?
No, I was just, there was a few names she mentioned that weren't on here, and then you got to be on the sketch. Who's in there?
Absentee.
Absentee. Yep.
Matthew Gosh, nine.
Okay.
Gloria Anderson, twelve.
Okay.
Thirty-one total write-ins. Robert Wolf, five. Eric Rage, six. Connie.
Molly Mulligan.
Mulligan, five. Jerry Lorenzen, five. Alan Johnson, four. John Kelly, three. Randy Shutt, one. Jerry Mathias, one. Sandy Wolf, one.
All right.
You said Robert Wolf, five.
I had Robert Wolf at five.
Okay. On Bill Chut. Yep. All right, what's next?
City of Dale Mayor.
Oh, you're gonna say that.
I will.
Thank you.
Turn us on a flag to say, hold up when he's ready. Cause I'm ready. Monte Crichton.
Crichton.
I can.
Monte.
Thirty-three.
Yep.
Uh, write-ins for Tanner Hagee, three, Jason Blunk, one.
Yep.
Absentee Mighty Cricht- Monte Crichton, zero.
Yeah.
Dustin Logan, one.
Let's clear out our bed. My several is on the end. All right.
City of Dale City Council at-large. There were twenty-one write-ins. Jace Holly, one, Tyson Ernst, ten, Dan Siggibart, one, Michael Botker, one, Phyllis Love, two, Dan Gangstead, one, Robert, uh, Dehaus, I think that's an S, three, Russ Kenbeck, one, Tanner Hagee, one.
Yep.
Absentee, one write-in. Esteban Martinez, one.
Mayor.
I just want me to go back there, something else. Tanner Hagee. Oh, no, this.
Oh, money.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
City of Dale City Council at-large, T-F-B. Uh, Thomas McCullough, forty. Write-ins, there were sixteen. Eric Kelly was one, Michael Botker was three, Bradley Erhan was three, Tyson Ernst was four, Dustin Miller was four, Russ Kenbeck was one.
Okay.
What's your, what's your total write-ins?
Sixteen, okay.
Yep.
Want me to start with that?
No, that's good.
Very good.
No, you're fine.
Absentee Thomas McCullough, one, write-in, zero.
Okay.
Thomas McCullough, it is. City of Westside Mayor, Michelle Simmons, thirty-three, I had four write-ins, Larry Johns, two, Doug Ayers, one, Ryan Hagee, one.
Okay.
Absentee, uh, Michelle Si- Simons, two, write-in, zero.
All right.
City of Westside City Council at-large, Alan Cook, thirty-seven, Kevin Simons, thirty-five, I had three write-ins, Robby Clink, Doug Ayers, one, and Ryan Hagee, one.
Awesome.
Absentee Alan Cook, two, Kevin Simons, two, write-in, zero. All right.
I'm moving on, Parwita School Director at-large, Dale Net- Dale Danielle Shroud, eighty-eight, Brian Hagee, seventy-six, I had three write-ins, Nicholas Rosner, one, Kara Rosner, one, and Deborah, one, Deborah.
All right, absentee Danielle Shrad, five, Brian Hagee, four, write-in, zero.
Okay.
Dennison School Director at-large. Don't they know it's Wednesday I have a meeting? Uh, Louis, uh, Shering had fifteen. David Weavers had twenty, and John Held had fifteen.
You said Dennison School Director.
At-large, yes, sir.
We're, what precinct are you?
Do this?
But there are multiple precincts that vote on that.
You are in the northeast, you're in the northeast, right?
It doesn't really tell me, but I can see them on page thirteen.
Open your, what's your book say on the front cover?
Oh, the bad stuff.
She's in the, she's in the north.
Northeast.
Northeast, okay.
Any.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can remember.
Dennison School Director at-large, Louis Shering, fifteen, David Weavers, twenty, and John R. Held, fifteen.
Correct, you've already done the absentee.
Yep, absentee's done.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And move on precinct by itself.
O-A-B-C-I-G School Director at-large.
O-A-B-C-I-G, oh, any alphabet.
Oh, my.
Ninety percent of alphabet schools anymore.
MBAO-COU, I'm beat by a letter.
Yeah.
I said already?
Don't.
I don't think it's there, cause there's nobody voted, it's zero, right?
Oh, that is an out. There should be, there should be.
Absolutely.
I've seen her.
Oh, I've seen her.
Oh. Yeah, zero.
Yeah, Josh, all, they, they got no votes.
Yeah.
Absentee, uh, Josh Alish, one, write-in, zero.
So what was on the write-in vote?
No, we're only one county of, uh, probably four or five.
All right, then never mind about like proclaiming a winner, sorry.
We are not proclaiming a winner, another county will do that, either county.
All right, so the next one is O-A-B-C-I-G School Director, District Three, Aaron Marth, nothing, no one voted. I live in.
Absentee Aaron Marth, one, write-in, zero.
Absentee, oh, I've got Stephanie Conrad.
Conrad, Conradi?
They were right standing.
Is there? What'd you say?
Josh Hollish? That was before, that was.
Well, that was before.
The, the name on the ballot was Aaron Marth. She received one vote and no write-ins. Or, for District Three?
No.
District Three, Aaron got no vote.
Oh. District Three, Aaron Marth, one, yes, okay, yep.
No proclaiming winners over there.
Yeah. Okay, let's go to District Two.
Well, District Four is my next page.
I don't have a District Two.
I have District Four.
Some northeast precinct, District Two.
I'm in District Four.
Do you have District Two?
I, I had art or, I don't have a.
She said she was northeast.
I don't have a District Two, I have an at-large, a District Three, and a District Four.
Next district.
My next, next district is four, Ryan Goodman, zero.
Okay.
Absentee Ryan Goodman, one, write-in, zero.
All right, now we are on District Six, alphabet soup, Dayton Lager, zero.
Okay.
Absentee Dayton Lager, one, write-in, zero.
Okay. There's still should be a District.
I'm at District True Two now, gonna have Stephanie Conradi, you still look with hers?
You will, and we don't have to be.
Yeah, for absentee Stephanie had one, write-in, zero.
Okay, sure.
So I think that's, was, what's the T-F-B?
To fill a vacancy.
To fill a vacancy, that's where I wasn't.
I think you're right.
Hey.
Don't worry, I was having a bit of.
Where are you gonna get to the bottom?
I know.
Pointing to me, my book is.
Where are we going now?
We are going to ESAC School Director at-large.
Okay.
And Jim Wallace got zero, John Quinn got one, Kimberly Bromley got one, and, uh, Loudsler has got zero.
ESAC School Director at-large. Jim Wallace, John Quinn, Kimball Bromley, and Kyle Lenners all got zero, write-in, zero.
That's what I was showing. All right.
I have ESAC School Public Measure, S-S. I have one yes vote, and, uh, nobody said no.
Where, where are you at?
Uh, ESAC's Public School Measure, S-S. One yes vote.
ESAC absentee, yes and zero, no, zero.
All right.
Very highly contested races here. Iowa Central Community College Public Measure, V-T.
Such a small.
No, yes is one, no. That's a write-in, I don't have write-in, no.
Absentee for the same, make it a tie vote, I have one yes and no and zero.
I've been a white chap.
That's right. You can count on that.
Okay.
You're done, sister.
You're done.
Oh, I love it so much.
Just when you get the hang of it.
I was just getting the hang of it.
City of Byron, City Council at-large.
Tyler. Tyler, at-large?
At-large.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Paul Shits, twenty-one. Schultz.
Schultz.
Look like my division's for.
It does.
Uh, Myrna Henrath? One. Jen Huglen, four, Stacy Boyens, two, Kathy Lictie, eighteen. Michael Lictie, one, Zach Keller, one, Kami Keller, one, Neil Keller, one.
Twenty-one and eighteen, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
And there's still eleven others.
Yeah.
Down the dial.
So absentee, four write-ins. Kathy Lictie, one, Paul Schultz, one, Jen Hogland, one, James Lesford, one.
Yeah.
Three else? Okay.
Where are we going to now?
City of Ricketts, Mayor.
I'm here.
Write-ins, three. Kevin Fawson, one, Brad Reason, two.
Okay.
Absentee, write-ins, two, Brad Reason, two.
All right.
Welcome back.
City of Ricketts, City Council at-large.
Yep.
You have five write-ins. Lori Jepson, one, Bryce Meyer, one, Sherry Reeling, one, Carol Schlesling, one, Chalston.
Uh, Sherry. I'm showing two.
I read, yeah, Cherry Reeling, two.
Well, for Dream Briggel.
Oh, I have a dream, three votes. Whole up way on top, two.
Okay.
She actually had her name on the ballot.
She's actually on the ballot.
Wanted to do the bear. Council.
Oh, City Council, yeah, correct.
That matchup?
Yes.
Did she?
So Ricketts Council at-large absentee, uh, Dream Briggel, one, five total write-ins. Carol Schlenzig, one, Sherry Reiling, one, Clayton Marth, one. Bruce Meyer, one, Ethan Crowell, one.
So did the person that was on the ballot win, or we can't tell yet?
She did, but it's a vote for two, so we'll draw a name out of the hat, cause there's a tie. We have two cities to draw names out of the hat for.
Vote for council members?
Um, I believe they are council members. Schleswig City Council at-large. Rory De, Rory Dagan, fifty. Richard Hanlon, fifty-six. Twenty-three write-ins. John Finner, and six, Judy Bearstar, two, Donald Meyer, two, Michael Jepson, one, Rick Lorenzen, two, to Bubkey, two, Brittany Remzer, one, Alan Wees, one, Jason Schultz, one, Ryan Kregel, one, April Stender, one. Kelly Rupert, one, Dakota Remzer, one, Tanner Walker, one.
Okay.
Uh, absentee Rory Dagan, zero, Richard Hanlon, one, no write-ins.
There you go.
Charter Oak Ute School Director, District Two.
Crazy.
Sorry.
Oh, it's ours, that's my fault.
No, no, you're fine.
District Two, SRK.
Jill, Jill Clinker, zero, Tanner Weed, zero, no write-ins.
All right, absentee Jill Clinker, eight, Tanner Weed, four, write-in, zero.
All right.
Dennison School Director at-large.
All right.
Louis Shering, twelve, Dave Weavers, twenty-one, John Held, twenty-four write-ins. Trevor Nimitz, one, Ryan Bigness, one, Derek Lambert, two.
It's already on.
Okay. We're in here, absentees. Sweet School at-large.
Shustrey School at-large, yep, Trevor Nimitz, eighty.
Yep.
Nineteen write-ins, Ryan Ernst, one, Ross Wood, four.
That's where I go.
Again. Yeah, the rest are scattered.
Absentee, uh, Trevor Nimitz, five, one write-in, Sarah Delanti, one.
Okay.
O-A-B-C-I-G School Director at-large.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Josh Alish, zero, or zero write-ins?
Yep.
Absentee Josh Alish, one, zero write-in.
Okay.
O-A-B-C-I-G School Director, District Three, Aaron Mark, zero, write-in, zero.
Absentee Aaron Marth, one.
Yeah.
Write-in, zero.
Okay.
O-A-B-C-I-G School District Four, Ryan Goodman, zero, write-in, zero.
All right.
Absentee Ryan Goodman, one, write-in, zero.
O-A-B-C-I-G School Director, District Six, Nathan Roger, zero, zero write-ins.
Absentee Nathan got one, write-in, zero.
All right.
O-A-B-C-I-G School Director, District Two. Two, what's it, T-V-F, two?
Stephanie Conradi.
Stephanie Conradi, zero, write-in, zero.
Okay, and Stephanie, one, write-in, zero.
All right.
Maple Valley Anthenoto School Director, District One. Robert Paulson, zero, write-in, zero.
Okay.
Absentee Robert Paulson, zero, write-in, zero.
Assistants.
Eleven. Maple Valley Anthenoto School Director, District Three, Dale Wimmer, zero, zero write-ins.
Absentee Dale Wimmer, zero, write-in, zero.
Okay.
Maple Valley Anthenoto District Five, Hannah Hayman, zero, zero write-ins.
Okay, absentee Hannah Hayman, zero, write-in, zero.
You're an assistant.
Western Iowa Tech Community College Director, District Two. Brad Griffin, zero, zero write-ins.
All right.
Absentee Brad Griffin, zero, write-in, zero.
Okay.
Western Iowa Community College District Eight, Russell Ray, zero, zero write-ins.
All right.
Absentee Russell Ray, zero, zero write-in.
All right.
That's all we got. Next time.
Aspen Wall, city mayor.
I just had coffee with Tommy.
Thomas Earlbeck, seventeen. Write-in, zero.
Absentee, Thomas Earlbeck, seven. Write-in, zero.
All right.
Aspen Wall, city at large. City Council at Large. Carol Lyle, sixteen. Fred Earlbeck, seventeen. Cody Kirkoff, seventeen. Rick Warner, sixteen. Ted Jansen, seventeen.
Wow.
Write-in, zero. Basically, the town of Earl, uh.
They are divided. They are divided.
An issue going on.
So, City of Aspen Wall, absentee. City Council at Large, Carol Lyle, listen to these, eight. Fred Earlbeck, eight. Cody Kirkoff, eight. Rick Warner, eight. Ted Jansen, eight. Write-in, zero.
That's crazy.
They actually take the time, their name's on the ballot, they give votes.
Isn't that crazy?
What was the final? I would say Aspen Wall.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Wow. Support your local representative. All five got elected.
All five get elected.
Oh, wow.
One mayor, five council.
So the whole council leaves it.
At the same time.
Same time.
It should be.
They need to decide. They set up their government that way a long time ago.
Who's gonna be the boss?
The cap, the mayor.
The mayor, Tom Earlbeck, of course. Smiley. Nope, not new. He's been doing this ever since I've been auditor.
All these five are already on the.
They are currently on the council.
Six people out of Aspen Wall.
It's third at the time.
You're not taking them very far. They're probably meet at the community building or at Tom's business or something. I don't know. They don't go far. Post office, I don't know, wherever.
There's a dance hall in there.
There's always a bar.
Manila, city, city of Manila mayor.
We were too busy.
We were busy.
Going down. Manila mayor.
Corey Gaskell, two hundred and forty.
Well-attend, well-turned.
Six write-ins. I refuse to use the first name.
We're just. Yeah, I know. I know. Some of them are bad.
Brandon Summerfield, one. The first one was one. The next thing is blank, one. Then Zach Rasmussen got two. And Chris Schindler got one.
Absentee, Corey Gaskell, twenty-five. Two write-ins. Zach Rasmussen, two.
Where do you at, Ty?
City of, City of Manila, uh, City Council at Large. Sorry, I got kind of lost in space.
All right, welcome back.
Paul Hyman, one thirty-two. Roger Kinkle, one thirty. Kurt Chapman must have pulled his name off the ballot. That's just extra. Anyway, Monica Schultz. Ninety-seven. Pam Sebring, seventy-one. No, I got write-ins.
Okay.
Good.
For total.
Ree Minion, me. Minow, Minow?
Oh, Minow.
Minow?
Minow.
Minow? Okay, Ree Minow, one. DJ Minow, one. Dane Bloom, one. Monica Schultz, one.
Absentee, uh, Paul Hyman, fourteen. Roger Kinkle, seventeen. Monica Schultz, eight. Pam Sebring, eleven.
Oh, yeah.
No write-ins.
Okay, are we the school director at large?
I'll say for you.
All right, at large.
At large, I believe, Daniel Shred. One. Ryan Haggy, one. Write-ins, zero.
Absentee, Danielle Shred, five. Ryan Haggy, four. Write-in, zero.
Dennison School Director at Large.
Southeast, right?
Don't say anything online. Louis, Louis Shering is number on the top of it. Okay, Louis Shering, one. Dave Weavers, one. David Weavers, one. John Held, one.
You are southeast.
Yeah, I did say, but.
I think it's on your cover of your book, but. Yeah.
All right. Where we going to?
Where's your next one, Ty?
You did, you didn't have anything?
He already did it.
Oh, he already did it? Okay. IKM Manning, Director at Large. School Director, Large. Okay, Lucas Cole Potoff, one seventeen. Jeremy Puck, one thirty-four. Nick Schekinger, one, or excuse me, three, eight, six. Write-ins are seventeen. Phil Struck, Phil Struckey, three. Amy Ayala. Ayala?
Ayala?
One. A blank, one. Garrett Wupke, one. Grant Struckey, seven. Chad Stammer, one. Gene Bo, Bo, one.
Haggy?
Bogey. Burton. Beal? I think it's hard to tell. I'd say you or I, he. One. Cody Willenborg, one.
Awesome.
Absentee, Lucas Potoff, forty-one. Jeremy Puck, forty-six. Nick Schekinger, forty-six. Write-in, zero.
Okay, IKM Manning, Director, District One-B. Ready? Amy Fernading, two, four, two. Write-ins. Fourteen. Jessica Holloway, one. No, one. Corey Gaskell, two. Anyone but her, one. Blank space, one. Nick Schekinger, one. Phil Struckey, one. Nate Bory, one. Elmer Fudd, one. Mickey Mouse, got two. I should have just kept my mouth shut earlier. Dean Hoffman, one. Oh, this gets worse. Adolf Hitler got a vote.
Oh, boy.
For the IKM School District?
Yes.
Uh, absentee, Amy Fernading, fifty-three. One write-in. Bonnie Johnson.
Two-B?
Two-B, man. IKM Manning, just, uh, Josh Lindy, one thirty, one thirty-seven. Grant Struckey. Three twenty-three. Uh, one write-in, but it's a blank.
Absentee, Josh Lindy, forty-two. Grant Struckey, thirty-six. Write-in, zero.
All right.
DMAC District Director, number three. Trish Roberts. Forty-nine. Write-in, zero.
All right, absentee, Trish Roberts, twenty-six. Write-in, zero.
IKM Manning School, Public Measure, TH. Yes, one hundred and fifty. No, three hundred and forty.
Yes. Yep.
Manning, you get the hit. Manila does not want it.
They're persistent.
That's it for me, neighbor.
I have. Oh, yeah. City of Charter Oak Mayor, Benjamin Heine, forty-four. Peggy Staley, ninety-two. Uh, one write-in for Ryan Bar.
In the office, wondering.
Absentee, Benjamin Heine, four. Peggy Staley, three. Write-in, zero.
Unfortunately.
City of Charter Oak, City Council at Large, Alec Castillo, eighty-eight. Patricia Gosler, forty-four. Wayne Copeland, sixty. Thirteen write-ins. Uh, they're scattered. Does anybody want to know who they were? Is that waste of time?
Did you say Christopher? Did you say Christopher Shelton?
You don't have to read the thirteen.
Yeah, there's nothing exciting.
And then absentee.
Oh, absentee for Charter Oak City Council at Large, Christopher Shelton, one. Alec Castillo, four. Patricia Gosler, three. Wayne Copeland, four. Write-in, zero.
All right.
City Council, or Charter Oak City Council at Large, uh, to fill a vacancy. Randy Almer got a hundred and twenty-one. I had ten write-ins, uh, with the most person getting, uh. Two.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Absentee, Randy Almer, four. Two write-ins. Matthew Knowles, two.
Matthew Knowles got two on my. Uh, Boyer Valley School District at Large, Elizabeth Houston, zero. Somebody told me to keep moving.
I know. Got a lot of poor, poor guy with the whole book in front of him.
He volunteered for the job. He needs to keep up. I like that look on your face when I said you volunteered. I don't think you, I don't think you realize. Zeros.
You've already done your absentee, guy.
Yeah.
All right, Boyer Valley School District, one. Paul Codale, zero.
District two.
Joette Codale, zero.
Keep them in order, please.
All right.
Try hard. You can do it. Sorry, I'm.
Are you ready for me to move on? Jill Clinker had a hundred and forty. Tanner Weed had a hundred and thirty-five, uh, one write-in. You ready for my next one? Dennison School Director at Large. Louis Shering got zero. Dave Weavers got zero. And John Held got zero. Moving on to, uh, Director at Large, uh, Trevor Nimitz, zero. That's my last page.
Yes. Next, go Dennison.
City of Dennison Mayor. Mayor, Dennison. Write-ins, hundred and eighty-nine.
You got sixty-two, a hundred votes if you take that away from. Yeah, one eighty-nine.
Is that the whole state of Dennison?
Who got the majority of the write-ins?
Uh, Dustin Logan got a hundred and thirty-one.
Is there another name?
Pam Sosman got nineteen.
Perfect. There we go. That's all you need to write, need to say. Please don't say that whole list.
Absentee, twenty-six total. Write-in. Uh, Dustin Logan got the most. He had eighteen. Pam Sosman, six.
Okay, City of Dennison, City Council at Large, Jennifer Zuck Smith, two hundred and ten, twenty-eight.
Absentee, Jennifer Zuck Smith, thirty-nine. Five total.
City of Dennison Council Ward, one. Write-ins, forty-one.
Top is Dave, bottom is me.
You got thirty.
Ty doing the second from the bottom.
Absentee, write-ins, twelve. Dave Peterson got nine.
I think it'll be all right.
City of Dennison, City Council Ward, three. Forty-one write-ins. Terry Crawford at nine.
Uh, absentee, five write-ins. Mike Schrader got two. Esteban Martinez, three.
Yeah.
Boyer Valley School District Director at Large, Elizabeth Houston, zero. Write-in, zero.
Yeah, yeah, you've done that.
Boyer Valley School Director, District One. Paul Codale, zero. Write-in, zero. Boyer Valley District Two. Joette Codale, zero. Write-in, zero. Dennison School Director at Large, Louis Shering, one ninety-eight. Dave Weavers, two oh two. John Held, two oh six. Twelve write-ins.
Who got like?
Okay, it's one ninety-eight, two oh two, two oh six.
Schleswig School Director at Large, Trevor Nimitz, zero. Write-in, zero. That's all I got.
I think we might have.
Is that it? Or I thought, she might, did we do the? Yeah, I just forget the, the Iowa Western Community College Public Measure. That was in one? And same thing with the VT, the Iowa Central Community College.
They were burning early.
Did we run out of certificates? It's more planned. And the sign notes.
If I'm an order, please.
Thanks for ad-libbing on that one.
What color or?
How beautiful would you like? Is that historically relevant?
Years from now, people will look at that and say, who?
Those are, he wrote in black ink.
Those paint pens from Jean, they throw you, they're purple.
Yeah.
Purple. I ordered them myself. That's why I have so many. That has been totally trouble.
She's just a troublemaker. Oh, but being backwards order. No.
That's why I was looking at it, but.
I was almost done with his pile. Someone can have his file.
Yeah, close.
You can trust us.
I know how you all are. We'll spend the rest of the day sorting papers.
Have to believe you guys can do whatever you want.
We're gonna do whatever we want even while you're here.
You could be, I could sign my name exactly the same a hundred times in a row.
Oh, my god. I can't do it. I can't sign the same, but. Yeah.
I don't concentrate.
I don't even try.
Wouldn't it be bad if I spelled my name wrong?
We did it all, okay.
This is more entertaining.
I don't know if I want to trade you.
I know, this is, uh. This is probably pretty, uh, perfect every time.
Process, yeah.
Um, by city, yeah, they're pretty organized. You can grab that, but then stack them outside, you know. But I said, I didn't want to. Jean will have hers done in a minute, but.
I will. And they will all be perfect. There's one that the E's not very good.
They're in order.
I'm looking them down. I know where y'all live, so.
But you don't know where I hang out. They're more than where I live.
All the trail.
And Sosman's house.
Absolutely hilarious.
I got you pegged. Oh, you know what? We gotta draw names on.
I'm too bendy.
I've already done two piles.
Oh, overachiever. Keep up.
So the first one will be. Ricketts, City of Ricketts at Large Council. Um, it's a vote for two. There was one name. No, it's a vote for three. I can't remember. I think it's a vote for, I think it's a vote for three. Um, Dream Briggel had her name on the ballot. Um, she's clear winner. Um, Sherry Reiling ended up with a total of three votes. And there was, um, Bruce, you know, Bryce Meyer. Is that Bruce's son, Bryce's brother? And then there was Earl. Schlendzig. Schlendzig.
I procure anyway.
She might be a current council member. I don't know. She might be a current council member. I don't know.
I'm dead. Oh, you are, how you want them exactly?
You're the only one that needs to sign that one. They're on our left here. There's just two.
Funny how we all ended up in the rights. Yeah, I just started randomly.
You were guided, actually.
I was guided.
Awesome auditor. Made that happen for you.
Haven't we told you lately how awesome you are the day after election?
I'm not sure.
You still are.
Most of the time.
Tell me that.
So for sure.
I get to tell myself.
I can actually drink it.
No, you can't. I have to draw names out of a hat, yeah.
How long did it take you to, in your staff? We really weren't know the truth about.
All the time.
We should call.
Since the election.
Yeah. Yeah. Fielding phone calls, questions about. Names, the potential names that will be, you know, and.
I waited for y'all over at the old-fashioned until I thought, I can't wait for those elections.
No, don't work for us.
I'd go home.
You have to give me an old-fashioned today's cans. And they're good, really good.
Yeah, super good.
I saw somebody drink three of them.
Did you get to?
Just one.
We didn't draw names yet, and so we're, we're going to here shortly.
Well, too bad you didn't bring a hat.
We got a hat.
We got a hat.
Gonna say if you.
Whoever ties close by, we're always close to a hat.
So then, Meg, cause Megan has to print a couple forms, so you have to sign those before you leave? But can we do the name dropping? Can I drop these two in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bryce and Carol are in there for the.
Shake it up, shake it good.
Don't peek in.
I'm just trying to make sure they're not.
We're not lost in that big old hat. In the big old hat.
Where to put them tied?
Towards the back. Towards the back.
Actually, right, the back of your hat.
Back of his head.
All right, everybody got a drum roll, please? It is. Carol. Thanks, Sam. It's Iowa, it's the winner.
All right. Carol, then get, get the other one out of there, please.
I got it.
Now we have the City of Vale to fill a vacancy at large, um, Dustin Miller and Tyson Ernst. So the uniqueness of this one is that Tyson Ernst won, clearly won the other at-large position, which is not a to fill a vacancy. Uh, so if his name is drawn out of the hat, he will get to choose.
Let's draw the other guy.
Just draw the other guy.
Just draw the other guy. Don't say that.
Okay, it's at the same end of the hat, please.
That's the front for me, lays back to you. So I hope, wouldn't it be great if I do this right, too?
That's what happens. You get elected to two offices.
Tyson Ernst.
You get to choose.
Son of a biscuit.
So you're not done.
Never over.
I can't help it.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your, your offering of your hat.
Yeah.
For the official drawing of the names.
Could do it out of the.
This hat, this hat will end up in the museum.
There's a sign on all these papers. I sit here and think to myself, this is quite a pile. Of all the people that are serving in this county. Imagine if a small county can have about the same number of community.
I mean, why didn't they do Areweva? We got a second.
Oh, yeah, we can't even.
Yeah, what is that?
The Boyer Valley.
Don't sign notes. Don't sign notes. We'll have those to sign next Tuesday.
Question.
So we'll do a second canvas next Tuesday of the.
Who needs these?
A handful of school districts that require a second canvas, which is more, more control of. Areweva.
Kevin Gill.
Boyer Valley.
Carl O'Pugh.
Carl O'Pugh.
Would they do that just to torture supervisor?
Second you.
You can't be trusted to just take those and pass them on in the right order. I didn't mean it like.
Even Dennison's will do a second canvas, or because I grew up also voters.
Let's search up.
Do they vote for Dennison, or do they vote? They vote for Slushway. Who else votes for Dennison?
I think though, there's part of the Dennison School District is night accounting. Really, Karen? Small bar. So I'm sure they'll vote for the Dennison scoreboard.
Yeah.
I don't know why, there's three seats, there's three people running, we even bother.
It's the American way. What do you mean?
Well, the American way, no wonder the American.
You're right. That's almost. Just a key and a heart.
Do you have any time to like sign my name in my life? It was when I was in the army that it really started to go downhill. You remember how I'd be tied just like. Three times a day for child. Yeah, that dude.
I don't know that I haven't signed in for.
It's all.
Not sure I did that.
What does that mean? In the same little paper.
I remember.
At the end of the time.
I gotta screw you up.
No. You just keep doing what you're doing.
I is gonna be solid. Solid as.
Now, when you're at a duty station, you know, that's like training style.
And I thought, I remember when I was at the brag week, designed.
Yeah, I don't know. Probably depending on what kind of unit you were in.
Like, and when I, we would go.
Hardcore.
We would sneak up there.
Signal battalion.
When we'd sneak over.
I know, I was there. When I went to Desert Storm, the unit I joined was Bragg.
Were they?
Yeah.
And, and when I'd go over to Pope, I had a girlfriend or, and I'd go over to Dave or Pete, then I always had to sign in the third time.
Oh.
They literally had a fan, so we had a mess. They, they.
Best deal ever was in the morning, on the weekends, when you could get an omelet. Oh my gosh, the best. The best ever. I strive to make an omelet like that.
Then you. When they'd stuff them full.
I try really hard. They are like paper thin eggs, paper thin eggs.
I will never forget basic trail, the egg lady.
And it would be like this long, it'd be like eighteen, twenty inches long.
Stuff tray of all the goodies.
Full of all the stuff.
Worked Benny in Georgia.
Oh, yeah, it's there.
Lady doing eggs every morning. She was one of a full-figured lady, and she had a mustache. And sweat was just dripping off her face on the. Honey, want your eggs?
Dry.
And usually had like three minutes to eat breakfast, so you didn't even question it, just whatever they.
Salt was probably good.
Yeah. I will never.
Now, you probably have high blood pressure because of all that salt you had for her.
The eggs were grilling and she, you could just hear.
These are.
They will.
When they recrop, it would get.
That's terrible.
Get that face.
That's a good story. Make sure you save that for a Vets' Day speech.
That's hilarious.
Built character.
Yeah. That's funny.
Forgot to go do, uh, stuff at the radio yesterday morning.
It's on that Facebook.
Yeah, that was good. That was fun.
Who was all there with you? I forget.
Jeff Mendon, all of us there.
Oh.
I, he was, uh.
He's currently.
And I was on the Denison yesterday.
Sioux City. The, we're gardening up there. Yeah, BA directors, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he actually said. Are you allowed to, or how do you tell Louise no? I don't know if anybody's ever tried.
It's possible. I don't think she hear, even if you say it, I don't know that she hears no. So you're like. Say that again.
I think anybody's ever tried, I think.
You were just. In the most loving way, of course, Louise.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were actually spent more time bragging about her.
Oh, yes, for real.
Said I brag all over Naco about her. I said, hopefully they don't try to steal her over in California.
You know, and she, uh. Right, recently see phone calls from other counties with.
Didn't have that.
I'll be there in a minute.
But those counties.
Louise is more adventurous, too.
They need to.
That's a girl that loves her job. Oh, well, not overachieving, hold on.
Somebody else.
I'll say it.
Chippy, very many MREs.
No.
Plenty. Are there any, were there better ones and other ones?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Some who strive to get a hold of.
A lot of people didn't, and I, I started with C-Rex.
Some didn't even help, but they.
Really?
At least I did. Some I just liked, gave it to somebody else, and some weren't good, but terrible.
And you'd hold on to like the M and Ms that were in there, and the crackers and the peanut butter, you'd hold on to that stuff, because it's like a bazillion calories. So you couldn't hardly eat the whole thing. I mean, you could, but then you're on the weight restriction, and you're, you're a, you're a road guard for the battalion when you're marching and stuff. You're a.
You gotta turn it off, run it.
You gotta run up there to the next.
Yeah, you run to the intersection, and then you run to catch back up to the unit, and oh, yeah.
Down there, hold it then.
Done that, been there, done that.
Been a car drive through that intersection in seventeen years, but you're gonna span there.
We take this one?
No, we don't need to do that one.
Great.
We'll do those next time.
Remember my buddy Chris, like Campsnet?
Yeah.
When he was in Iraq, now that one of our friends would send him listerine bottles full of whiskey.
We enjoy.
One of my friends.
We had Natalie says, let's send some gag gift to Josh when he was over in Iraq. I said, send him a, a box full of KY jellies. She did. They, they, they keep him healthy. He hadn't enough to everybody, they took him home. You know, when my great-grandfather died, six weeks from him.
We still.
Sorry, Crawford County. That's where he had his whiskey stored in listerine.
Really?
Gift. He's silent, but he still left.
Well, he knew.
He knew.
Sure, that's not very good for Vets' Day speech, so get all them kids. But I used to go to the Prague charge. I don't know if their parents.
Should have drilled at us a little harder about what exactly he said.
I was, I think there was a behavior.
I turned eighteen, all right, so I made it with Benny. Three boxes of cookies showed up mail.
Grow it up.
You growing up. I noticed that one.
Probably not many, zero.
Look at that.
Girl charged thought it was appropriate, passed them off to everybody else.
Not quite. Starts at his heart, goes around, and then.
Week eight or whatever, somewhere. Oh, yeah, I would laugh a little time when I thought it was funny.
Natalie got hurt.
By then you could really tell them.
She went to. Almost a holy year to.
Oh, dear, damn, that one.
And it was, she said, that's the most excruciating thing that I've ever been through. But I got, oh, dumb. My idea of certain time, but then she's got her. Comes down. You understand, they did the partials.
Yeah.
And looks nice.
Damn.
Flawed.
Genius.
Sorry, that's.
What? Sitting over here playing on my phone and I got work to do?
Yep.
What am I?
I don't know.
Fifteen.
I don't know. I know I haven't signed in a certificate yet.
These are part of his pile.
I don't want it, then it's gonna suck. Oh, wait.
It is Wednesday.
As with, Eric's gonna be talking about KY. Eric grabbed it, thing from Public Health, and he swatches they came back over here and put it in Cecil's desk. We waited for like two or three weeks, but he kind of pulled it out. Good way to say.
Eric, I were just.
That's funny. Bruce sitting there with all this week's wonders, he ever gonna open that drawer? That's funny. And her.
Yeah.
I, uh, I still write all my stuff by hand, my speeches, and then the girls will type them up, or, no, I've actually started typing fun, but I still like write them out by hand first. And I wasn't like.
So don't you keep them?
Do I keep my?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
You know, I can recycle them more.
That's what I wish I would do.
About the same stuff again. I never write them out, so. You gotta figure, you're probably gonna get things once every four years. Get a whole crew of kids there to listen.
Or just give a terrible speech, so they're out of you back.
It's a good guy. You don't want to consider it that for that. Two, two tools to do in one day this year. I thought, maybe if I just give a bad speech, I'll quit calling. I was in the army, amen. See ya. Don't you make the same mistake I did.
Believe my dad ran out of names.
Yeah, you know what, though, when you have people that, you know, that show up that, billions of, you know, non-school members show up forward, well, I've been looking so much, so forward to hearing their speech. When you think, oh, I better do a good job. Apparently, they talk about before you get here, you better do a good job.
Pressure's on.
Yeah.
I used to go to the one I slept with.
It was a very, that was a, the little guys, the twelve, or the peak, the kindergarten, first and second graders, dang, proud to be an American, you know, leaning in with sauce. They did so good. I'm sitting there with her standing.
When you do the canvas.
They were amazing. You know, you think the little kindergartners, and I mean, I was looking through them, they were all saying.
They do tabs.
You did a great job. That was pretty.
Or you're open, there's still the music director up there.
Who's?
And you're open.
No, it's, uh. I can't remember her first name, I've got Amy on my mind. And it's, uh, Lou, Louderball, Louderball? She was down here.
She related to somebody somehow, too.
Very nice lady. And Kim was down there, or up at Slushway, too, and then, so she'd seen both of mine. She said, well, you use parts of both of them after the Dennison one. I said, yeah, but I steered to. Some of my talking points about, towards the older crowd, you know. And you're spot, you gotta be careful with little ones. I watch kindergarten, first and second graders a lot, because once you see them start talking to each other, it's time for you to shut us.
I love that. That's funny.
Well.
It's called reading the crowd.
Read your crowd. The Dennison kids were kind of hard to reach, too. Of course, they're clear up in the bleachers, you know, and you're down in the middle on their basketball or, you know, Switzer. You know, but I do kind of watch to see if they, if they're talking amongst themselves and laughing or cheering up, you know, paying attention, otherwise you get. Do they stay?
Keep them in order.
How long did?
Harry, do you have stamp?
Go for it.
No.
Why not?
You speak for a half hour?
Oh, no, no. Actually, uh, look, Galvin told me, he said, about ten, fifteen minutes, about. He said, and I said, well, you called the wrong guy.
The only automatic signature on the payroll.
He laughed. He said, well, be done by three o'clock. Don't be between them and them doors at three o'clock. But, okay. Do you think anybody keeps these? I actually got mine hanging in my office for one of them.
Mine's in my old office, better known as Jerry's.
Think anybody keeps these? I showed you the one my aunt gave me from when my great-grandfather was a county supervisor.
Really?
Really?
Yeah. No, I've seen that. That's cool.
I need to look back and see that, maybe came nine week.
Really? You know, Mr. Schrader, that was my welding teacher at Fort Dodge, his. Grandpa. It was on, I think his name's on the corner. He was one of the first super.
Wow.
Still think we should do a black and white photo.
So he keeps an eye on me.
Just to have.
He's still over in Iowa, too.
I would agree, Amy.
He's on your side of the aisle.
You don't have to put it anywhere, then at least we have it. Down, down the road. For people to make fun of, under deers from now.
Think it'll take that long?
With the whole board.
No, I would say. A lot of guys have been a hundred days.
Were you expecting something? You kind of giggled ahead of time, I thought, oh, I better say something.
I was thinking like the next day or something.
So what people will find odd in about fifty years is that the whole board is women and they'll be surprised there aren't going to be men on the board.
That could be.
Joking.
That could easily be.
Just saying, people may have a hard time believing.
Could be.
Could be.
They do say men, uh, women live longer than men, that might be all that's left in property counting.
That's not all they say.
Yeah, that's not all they say.
Well, my, that's all I hear.
Of course it is.
Tells you that she's always right.
Cause I've always heard the other way to say, why do men live less than, like, it's because they want to. Been married for fifty-three years, I want to.
That's exactly how long I was married last night. I was trying to find a before and after picture of me and Jared, but then it made.
Jared's days are numbered, is that what you're still, I mean, you'll be tired of it.
Better dig that hole before the dirt freezes.
It's going on the. On the record.
On the record.
I was worried about that with our old dog.
I know, yeah.
And, uh, two weeks ago, she was stuck under the trampoline, trampoline dug in the ground.
Oh.
So I crawled under there to get her out, and she kept biting me. So Josh Anderson is there. He grabbed her by the collar and helped get her out from under the trampoline. Last time I seen her, she walked down the hill past the evergreen trees, looking at me like.
I'm out of here.
I'm out of here. I haven't seen it since.
Going for greener pastures, big guy.
She was, I mentioned she's at the big puppy playground in the sky.
Yeah.
Spoke before.
He was seventeen years old.
That's a good life for a dog.
One done.
Where they set dogs out there, let's see, just to disappear. So their owners don't have to be.
This one's still waiting for somebody.
You?
No, I'm on it.
They're on it?
Auditor, alright.
Just me?
Let's start signing.
Well, I can do that when I, I can do it later when you're gone.
They come all home with you.
If I do it now, then you're gonna wait for me to.
Yeah.
Try getting all that overtime. Documenting all my comp time. I know, it sounds funny, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah.
It does. Technically.
Technically.
I used to try to go to lunch at the.
Sorry, you're late.
When I.
I got a meeting at noon, so you don't need to.
I think it's an IT meeting or something.
It's not an IT meeting.
He won as.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll forget tomorrow, it's Thursday, and I don't forget.
What do we have at the JC's? I mean, all three of them used to have a JC.
Right.
I don't know, is there any, or how many more?
I don't know. Not in Crawford, yeah. They used to do that awesome haunted house.
They did.
Yep.
No, softball games were a blast.
Oh, yeah.
And the party after was even better.
Really?
Yep.
Pawsers.
Jim Schultz and Mark Koeman and. Who was the other girl getting?
One of the Koobens, Steve Koeman, maybe?
Or Steve Gibbon?
Yeah.
That could be.
Herb Koeman was.
I know everybody, you, you, you talk to people in other towns, Jim Schultz still, I bought, I could pitch a softball, nobody could hit that, sort of like. I was up at Smithland, so when I had somebody ask me that, Smithland was pretty big on playing ball.
I'm gonna do this little file. It's probably the last one you have to do. That's those two we, you just drew.
State, it's had a, on a national election, we had to sign.
Do they have to do that?
I, I bet they don't get certificates at the.
National level?
Yeah.
What?
I don't know.
There's more?
Sorry, just a few. All down.
Call down, that's not what I do, I don't.
All done and scribbled.
I forgot, I have so many.
Back to the, call one.
Well, we'll hold your check until you're finished. But that'll.
Smart.
This beats everybody on it.
No, I'm gonna give it to Kyle.
I'll just put an X.
You could.
No.
I have X's.
No, sir.
Put your mark.
No, sir.
Take your mark.
I don't know. You know, time's up. Thank you.
Hell, you know?
Come on.
You're right. You're right, I love it. It's my favorite day. What else can I stop?
No. They're almost done. Gabe has the most.
He's changed his name to Dan, it looks like me.
Kinda gets there.
Where's the knee?
My hand gets tired. Give it to the guy. Just a few more.
I'm back on, I did.
Those were those one to drop the hat.
Then when we pop popcorn, then we can have live feed.
When you wanna do that? When can we do that?
Don't even tell me.
Popcorn.
Yeah.
Start doing our fundraising for popcorn.
Whenever you sell it, whenever it works. I'll be here.
I'll do it.
Great, yes, I'll be here.
Yeah. Well, I've seen one on the, the district three meetings, but they, no, they, you and I did.
Sorry. They're last ones.
For perhaps a day.
Your last one.
A day. Third way, Wednesday.
You signed me a pack.
I did.
Either that or somebody.
Or today's Wednesday, or the shaman. So we do it two days, next week and two days. Will then be Thanksgiving. Maybe we do it.
She counting.
Wednesday and Friday.
Next week.
Next week.
I'll be at Cherokee next Friday.
I'll be in Devine next week.
I mean, I can really work that on for the candidates.
I can go on county.
No.
There's still Forrest.
Alright.
Pretty well, this Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah. Eighteenth, fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine to noon, nine to eleven.
I'm missing girls up in Kalamansky.
Oh, yeah.
Tomorrow.
That, that was done.
How about Thursday instead?
Go.
Tomorrow.
Super duper fun.
Where's the popcorn?
Um, I'm the first. We've got the packets of popcorn with the oil in it.
What's your athletic?